Welcome to the July 13, 2023 Planning Board. Gloria, may we have a roll call, please?
Chair LaFaro.
President.
Vice Chair Finity.
President.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Neely.
President.
I understand Board Member Catalinato is coming in from vacation, will be late. And Board Member Mutu, I believe, is absent. And Board Member Fulham, we assume, is in transit.
Stuck in traffic.
So we have a call.
Great, great, thank you.
With all that explanation.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Gloria, do we have minutes?
We do. June 8 and June 22.
June 8 and 22. We have a motion to accept the minutes. Motion by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor. Opposed extensions, four in favor, three absent. So we're going to go in order here.
I'm actually just gonna, because Jeff's only got a few things and I got the rest of the stuff. Someone's gonna do my stuff, if that's okay.
Yeah, you'll do yours first, correct? Was that Jeff's?
So number two is actually George Hastings.
Okay.
Excuse me.
This was the application for a three-lot subdivision, 2.35 acre parcel, March 20 zoning district. It's at Old Riverhead Road in Camden Days. So we actually did the approval for this.
Oh, this is okay too.
Okay.
Want some water?
I have water. For the record, Board Member Fulham sits here.
You may get through the traffic.
Okay. So this one's George Hastings, as I just said. So this was one that we did a three-lot subdivision approval. One lot in the back, two lots in the front, one for the existing house. We did the approval, we did extensions, and they adjusted it to the reapproval. So this is actually just for a reapproval of the final subdivision that we already approved on this one.
What was the date on that, Anthony?
The original approval was...
Excuse me?
Probably, it was probably two or three years ago, and then it was probably extended up until about a year ago.
April 22, 2021.
2021.
So any issues were re-approved?
No.
Moved by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor. Opposed extensions, Kate, you're...
I'll abstain just because I wasn't here for the extension. Thank you.
Four in favor, one extension, two absent.
Number three on the agenda is Noyak Northview. This is on a private road, Northview Hills Court, Noyak, CR 80 and CR 200 zoning district, four-lot subdivision plan. If you look at the area I put up here, this goes to show you where the property is in relation to some town open space. I don't know if I put the map up here, though. Yep, so you'll see that we did a cluster, we're looking at a cluster plan. Go back to the aerial TV, we'll show it up here.
Anthony, can you move the...
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. Four lots will be clustered basically down here, where there's lots on the other side of the road, but the open space up here, a strip of open space along already existing open space here, and some open space down here, so it all connects to the existing open space. This was supported by the Trails Advisory, because we got some trails in the area.
Great, did we, what are the ways in and ways out?
Oh, so the road here, there's a subdivision road here.
That comes off of Noyak Road?
Yes.
Just south of the deli.
Yes, that's correct. Actually, so this action here was really... Let's go to another area, let me see. Okay, this is the area I wanted to show you. They're in because they have to do a little bit of clearing to go in for a test well to, for the health department application. I just wanted to show you this map, as you could see, there's not a lot of, there's no public water in, you know, here. You got to the north here, some public water, some back here, some over here. So it looks like they're in with the Health Department for well water, so they're going to have to get a test well to see if they have potable water there. So they're asking for the ability to do the clearing, which I'll show you the map.
I don't think we discussed whether the Fire Department would want them to have a county water when we talked about this initially.
Yeah, well, the record, see, what happens is they have to go into the Health Department application with a letter of water availability from the Suffolk County Water Authority. The Suffolk County Water Authority typically then tells you, A, you have to bring in public water.
Put in a hydrant.
And put in a hydrant, and set the other thing, or not. So I don't recall, because I'm sure there was something that came out of the Fire District or the Fire Marshal.
Yeah, I don't...
But I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, nor I.
Does there represent...
Some, there's some here.
Well, there you go. Because we had this discussion, we've got to look at, you know, obviously they're going to have to put in perhaps a cistern or something, obviously. And obviously, there's water pressure issues when you're dealing with that, so...
And that's pretty far back.
Yeah, it is. There's going to be road improvements that are going to have to be done as part of this, I'm assuming.
And they're an APOD?
Yes.
Oh, the, right, it's improved sufficiently then?
Yeah.
Gotcha. Just to show you on this map here, they're showing on what would be Lot 1, an area of 1,600 square feet to do the test well.
1,600 square feet.
So pretty small, obviously.
And they're coming in from?
From Northview Hills Court.
Wayne, yeah, sorry to see there.
On behalf of the applicant, Joe Lombardo, our surveyors here actually made the request. As Anthony indicated, this is for the Health Department. We have a letter from the Water Authority, it's over 2,500 feet to the nearest terminus of the main. When Northview Hills was approved, which is a town road, there's two fire cisterns directly across the street from this area currently. And when, I believe, the Fire District would find those to satisfy the fire protection requirements for this subdivision. So in any case, we took the Health Department's request, and then we looked at the map and tried to locate that where we believe a driveway would be for that one lot. They were looking for it in that vicinity, so we believe, given the turn, and that's where the access to that lot would be, so we're trying to do the minimal clearing to get the rig in to do the test well.
So the resolution, it should be in the packet, I'm hoping it is, but the way I wrote the resolution was to approve the authorization of the 1,600 square feet of clearing for the test well with a, you know, a condition or something in there that says that this should be utilized or considered to be utilized for the clearing associated with that property for the future development, including the driveway. So I did put that in the resolution.
So Lot 1 gets, gets it charged against them for the well?
Yeah, because it's all on their property, but they can utilize that cleared area for the driveway. So in other words, are there allowed a certain percentage yet?
Got it.
Then let's, you know, do it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, is that we could use that as the water supply well for that lot, if and when, so that test well will be used to that lot.
So there'd be no more...
Yeah, and that's where our driveway to that location will be used, so that they're not going to have more clearing, you know, be penalized for the clearing.
Right. So Anthony, that's all in your resolution?
Yes, I resolved to, I recommended, resolved to approve the clearing associated with the test well, subject to that area being utilized for the clearing for that property.
Did you specify the amount of clearing?
Yes.
1400?
1,600, yep.
1,600.
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Tom.
This is Keith Stings, right? So...
No, I'm sorry, this is Noyak, number three.
Noyak, Noyak.
I'm sorry, okay, so I was looking at the wrong resolution, I just wanted to make sure. It says three lot, and I was like, there's four. Thank you.
Okay, so five...
Did you have a second?
Did I have a second?
We have a Tom.
Tom.
And all in favor, five, and two absent.
Number four, Old Stables at Spian, I'm still waiting on the engineer to sign off on the, that one had the SWIP, I had the road plan, so we're just going to do an extension of the action deadline until July 27.
Extension to July 27. Number seven.
Oh, number seven, okay, sorry, sorry.
Okay, and motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor.
This is reviewing the consent of the approval of the turf management plan and the groundwater
Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent.
management plan. Number five is 200 North McGee. Claire's been handling, you know, this component of the project. This is a two-lot subdivision. Right now, I'm working on the legal documents and open space dedication to the town. You might recall, we had the hearing on this one the same night that we had the best. And there was an issue between the property owner and the adjacent property regarding My understanding is it was submitted, it was reviewed by Mr. Petrovic. the driveway. Both parties have submitted information.
Petrovic. Oh, right, right, right.
Petrovic.
I need powers.
He gave some comments, is my understanding how this unfolded. They're still being reviewed by the attorney, but what I wanted to do was to at least, Those comments then were reviewed and sent back to the applicant. because we didn't close it with a date certain, so I'm just going to recommend that we schedule The applicant then incorporated those changes, was sent back to Marty Petrovic. this for the August 10th for the continuation, and if we're able to close it that night, that'll be great.
So extension to August 10th?
Petrovic.
Well, we're going to, we're scheduling, I guess, the continuation of the hearing And then he signed off on the, and so did Janice, by the way. for August 10th. They've all been doing the review, which is how the resolution was written.
If this dispute doesn't get resolved by August 10th...
So I actually just have a resolution here, and I always try to spell out the project Then we could, we could keep it open then.
Or we can decide it and make it subject to, but I anticipate that we'll go one way
in these resolutions for this project, you know, how we got to this point of requirement.
or the other if we're going to have to do that.
I only grade out those two areas, just so you know, because I always like to double-check
Okay. Okay, a motion by Dennis.
dates.
Why don't you start from the top, Anthony?
Second.
Just review it. Second by Gloria, all in favor.
Okay, sure.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, two absent.
So the resolution, by resolution date, is December 8, 2022.
So August 10th scheduled.
Number six was actually extended to the 27th, so it's not supposed to be on the The planning board, this works whereas, is when the planning board granted a conditional approval for the subdivision map. agenda. So that's basically the description of the location of the property.
So six, movie is off?
So it's off the agenda.
Six is off.
The second whereas is a description of the project itself, you know, how many lots, how many, you know, what the improvements are. Third whereas talks about the condition of approval and the requirement for a groundwater management plan and an integrated turf health management plan. The next whereas talks about the date that the documents were submitted. And then we have the next whereas, that the planning board retained Marty Petrovic to review. The next whereas, Marty Petrovic provided a report dated, and that's where I need to verify the date, because there's always a lot of emails going back and forth. The next whereas talks about the actual revised documents that were submitted, with the dates that we submitted, and how they were approved by the town, by Janice Shear and Mrs. Petrovic. So then I have the resolution that the planning board approves the integrated turf management monitoring plan and the groundwater management plan, and then recommending same to the town board, because they have to do the official.
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, you'll see, though, just, it's in a box there, it's 1,000 pages, just so you're aware.
The ground management plan?
The integrated turf management.
Is there a condensed version of it?
Yeah, I brought the applicants in, in case you have any questions.
Okay, great. We have one for each of us? Great, thank you.
What is that you're submitting to Soina?
This is the groundwater management.
The groundwater manager, which is much...
The monitoring plan.
Thank you.
The ITHMP is 1,000 pages.
So this is a review, and that's...
This is the groundwater monitoring plan, it was two plans.
Could we get the name for the record?
Paul Grosser.
Yeah, did you put it up?
Pw Grosser, that's all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So do you want to tell us just a little about this? Distributed, this is the ground.
I can do that.
Yeah, would you?
Just the description.
Yes, you can come here.
This is the site. And all the groundwater monitoring wells.
It was accounted.
Okay. Okay, this is the property. If you go to page 11 in the report, gives you a summary of all the different monitoring wells and what their purpose is, okay? To put this in perspective, there's 14 groundwater monitoring wells. Sabonic has seven, so it's a lot more monitoring going on. A lot of that is just the configuration of the golf course and the upstream situation here. If you look at, this here is all agricultural land, and this is Bill Tintle's sand gravel line, okay? And this is all agricultural land, all up to here. And the groundwater flow direction is this way, okay, towards Weesup Creek. So we found that a lot of this area has been contaminated with nitrates, and that's where we're looking, and using that water to irrigate and fertilize the golf course. Okay. And so we've got some background monitoring wells along this border to know what the water quality is coming onto the site, okay? And it varies, because this will be different, because upstream is not agricultural here, this is agricultural. So we're looking to see what those differences are. And then we've got a number of groundwater monitoring wells related to the sewage treatment plant, which would be here, which are required by the, by the Health Department. And then from the list there, you can see different wells monitoring different tees, different greens, different drainage recharge areas.
Irrigation ponds?
Irrigation ponds, yes. You've got that.
To just help me orient, where is the road that comes into the property? Because I know that the sewage treatment plant is near there.
This is Lewis Road.
Okay.
So this is the road coming into the property, this is where the sewage treatment plant is.
Okay, thank you.
This is Sunrise Highway up here.
And Weesup Creek is...
Weesup Creek is down.
Is here.
Right. So it's a very comprehensive plan as far as locations of all these wells, to monitor different things. We expect to see different water quality in a number of these wells, some related to background, and some related to, you know, these wells up here. Will probably be pretty clean, okay? These wells down in here will probably have some pretty significant nitrogen issues.
And you're saying that's a pre-existing condition?
Pre-existing condition, okay. We're in the process already, first three months, we're sampling every month, all of these wells, before any work has been done, as far as, you know, putting down top soil and turf or anything like that, you know, this clearing done, it had to be done, one is part of putting these wells in, and the other is part of construction, getting going.
And those reports have gone to Marty as well?
They will be going to Marty. Ultimately...
Because that's a baseline, right?
Yes, PW Grosser is actually doing it and using the laboratory that WSP, who does Sabonic and does the town's work on this, is done, but there's no contract now between the town and WSP. So we're getting, at least getting that data. We're all using the same protocols of how we sample, and this has been discussed with them, and they understand it, and it's similar, so. And those results will be going to Marty as well, and to the town.
And so the frequency of monitoring is monthly?
For the first three months, okay? And then it's going to be four times a year, once construction gets going and it gets in place. And we've refined that, you know, Sabonic, for instance, does quarterly monitoring. There was discussions with Marty, we've come up with doing four times a year monitoring, but I think we've got March or April, then June, August, and November. So it's more intense during the periods where there would be use of the golf course and recharge periods related to that. So...
Tell us a little bit about the nitrogen here.
Okay. We've put in shallow monitoring wells way back when as part of the EIS, right? And we discovered some significant nitrogen concentrations along this boundary. We have since the spring put in a vertical profile well, because we've got an irrigation well going in here, okay? And we went down, I want to say 130, 140 feet, something like that, and took samples. And we found a zone where there's the highest concentration of nitrogen, and that average was 18 milligrams per liter. So, you know, just perspective, drinking water standard is 10. And when we did all our analysis as part of the EIS, we were using about eight as for use for fertilizing and irrigation. So this is higher than that, which is a good thing, because we can get more fertilizer than out of irrigation water than we would need to put down. And, you know, pulling out, what we think we're going to be pulling out, we'll be removing about a ton of nitrogen per year with this method, okay? We pull out the high-nitrogen laden groundwater, put it on the golf course, the golf course uses it as a nutrient, it's a fertilizer program, right? And that counts in, their fertilizer cap, and the turf uses it.
Suppose there's excess that doesn't need it all, the green?
Excess, we've got, that's why we've got a second irrigation well here, and so we'll just blend. So this one, we expect to have little to no nitrogen in it. So if we have more than we need from here, we'll blend it with this low nitrogen water to get that right mixture.
Do you have a main station where you control all of these wells?
There's, the superintendent's station will have that. There's monitors on each of the well discharges, so it measures the nitrogen continuously. So at any time, superintendent can look at his irrigation water and know how much nitrogen he's got in this well here, how much nitrogen he's got in this well here.
So it shows up on that. Where is that located?
The superintendent, I think it's here at the...
Maintenance building.
Maintenance building, right? Yeah.
And they can pump the water from one location to another?
It goes into the pond. So it comes from here, goes to the pond, and comes from here, and goes to the pond, and mixes in the pond, okay? And then there's also a monitor on the discharge from the pond, where we pump the water out of the pond, and that goes to the irrigation system. So we'll know exactly what's going out to the heads as well.
So there's a monitoring well at the pond, several?
There's, well, there's a nitrogen monitor on the pump, the pond, so they'll know exactly what's going out into the irrigation system from the pond. There's also a monitoring well by the pond as well, as you see.
Yeah, that's what I'd asked.
Right. So that, in case there's a rupture of the pond liner or something like that, that would pick that up.
How large is that pond? Do you know, Wayne? I don't know. How much it holds?
About three. About three altogether.
Three?
Three acres.
Three acres.
Three acres. So that pond is about three acres, lined?
Right.
The, to me, and I tried to read when we went through this process months and months and months ago, I tried to catch up and read a lot of the documents you would prepare, Dr. Petrovic, but I'm far from an expert. But to me, it seems like the wells that are going to monitor what's heading towards Weesup Creek are extraordinarily critical, because that will basically tell us, is more coming out than went into the property, or whatever. So how often are those reports prepared?
That's four times a year.
Four times a year. And that's, I mean, I see the two by the STP.
All of these wells will be monitored four times a year.
Four times a year, okay.
Tom, do you think, that's an interesting point you make, do you think we need one on this side, right close to Weesup?
Well, here, there's this one, there's one here, and there's one here, and we've got one here. So we've got a number down, down gradient.
And what happens if the nitrogen is at 20, at that well?
Yeah.
What happens?
Do you shut it down?
There are triggers.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're normal triggers in the process. And the point is, monitor quarterly, so if it's not 20 the month, or three months before, then there's got to be some reason why, and I'll just go back to like Sabonic and the bridge. So the monitoring agreement program is to allow the town to actually have this monitoring at our cost, you to do that, so, and then it includes the whole groundwater monitoring program, as well as the ITHMP have entire program with triggers as certain things that we have to comply with. In Sabonic, they had an event when the Women's US Open was coming, so the year before, like the spring before, I think it was, or whatever, they had a spike of a certain chemical that wasn't even, it's not even allowed or used, not only on the golf course, but nowhere on Long Island. And so that's how sensitive this process is. And so all of a sudden, there was this search, how and where did this come up? Is someone dumping something on the property? But what they found out was that there were certain areas that needed to, turf needed to be replaced near a tee box. That happened to be near a well. And they found out that the supplier, the turf, didn't come from a supply on Long Island, it came from New Jersey, where this chemical was allowed. So that, and it was immediately corrected, you know, obviously, they found the source and it was able to be resolved, but that's, that's the triggers.
That's the sensitivity of it, yeah, that's important.
And Wayne was saying, there's a process, okay? If it triggers, like, it's two and a half milligrams per liter of nitrogen is what triggers the wells in Sabonic. These will have to be looked at a little differently, because they've got background concentrations, which might be eight, ten. So we've got to look at, that's why we got these three samples beforehand, say, okay, what's this baseline that we're looking at? And then if it goes one, two and a half above that, that triggers something, stop fertilizing in that area, okay? Until they go down and you can get a handle on, you know, what may have happened. We review drainage in the area, was any change has been made as far as, you know, contours that would maybe funnel water into these wells, or something like that. So a whole process is going through a review, and that includes resampling. So if it comes up high, we go back and resample to confirm that it wasn't a laboratory error or something like that. And if it does, then, then that triggers something. For the pesticides, it triggers no use of that pesticide, even if it's a positive, right? If there's any kind of detection, it triggers stop using that.
But protocol-wise, how does, how does that happen? Who sees it? What, what, what are the steps? That's...
What happens is, it actually goes straight through the town. You know, once we get through this first quarter, WSP is the firm that does the sampling, arranges for the analyses. The analyses are sent directly to the town for their review, and to Marty Petrovic. We actually don't see them generally until something happens.
And so that is, is someone on the town staff that's responsible for checking that and alerting immediately, or?
Janice.
Yeah, throws up a flag.
Janice looks at those documents?
Same thing on Sabonic and the bridge.
Yeah, not Marty Shay.
No, goes Department Director of Plan Management, yeah, so.
So you've mentioned that the contract has not yet been executed between the town?
Well, that's what we're, so to do that, we need you to approve...
You need to look at the plan, the...
contours that would maybe funnel water into these wells or something like that, so a, a whole process has gone through a review, and that includes re-sampling, so if it comes up high, we go back and re-sample to confirm that it wasn't a laboratory error or something like that, and if it does, then, then that triggers something. For the pesticides, it triggers no use of that pesticide, even if it's a, if it's a positive, right? If there's any kind of detection, it triggers stop using that, yeah.
But protocol wise, how does, how does that happen? Who's, who sees it, what, what, what are the steps, that's?
What, what happens is it actually goes straight through the town, you know, once we get through this first quarter, WSP is the firm that does the sampling, arranges for the analyses, the analyses are sent directly to the town for their review and to Marty Petrovic, we actually don't see them generally until something happens.
And so that is, is it someone on the town staff that's responsible for checking that and alerting immediately, or?
Janice.
Yeah, throws up a flag.
Janice looks at those documents?
Same thing on Sabonic and the bridge.
Yeah, not Marty Shay?
No, goes Department Director of Plan Management, yeah, so.
So you've mentioned that the contract has not yet been executed between the town?
Well, that's what we're, so to do that, we need you to approve.
To look at the plan, the blueprints.
The plans, and they get incorporated and, and by reference and attached to the agreement that goes to the town board.
Right.
And so this irrigation pond is critical, it's a critical ingredient in this whole.
Yes.
Scheme.
Yes, yes.
And so someone is checking that regularly?
When I was out doing the site visit six or eight weeks ago, Jessica had actually suggested that we might wanna come back when those ponds are being created, I see her here.
She's here.
I was wondering if, um, where we are in that, is, is that something we could plan to go see?
Yeah, we should.
You'll have to come up, sorry, but.
And that water is continuously monitored for nitrogen.
I think all of us have been.
The water in the pond.
In the pond, yeah, what, what comes out of the pond goes to the irrigation.
And I just talked to them here.
It's here, fine, we've got mics here.
As long as the mic picks you up.
The mics are hiding behind the cookies.
So there, um, I don't know what's easier for you guys, but the, the eastern side of the pond is being excavated right now, so all there is to see is a hole.
All the ground.
Um, but the liner is coming in soon, and I think that would be interesting for you guys to see.
Wait, let us know so that we could take a site visit.
Yes, it's, it should be in the next week or two.
I'd say that, I was just there a couple of hours ago, and the west pond there, I'd say is probably thirty to forty percent dug.
The large, the large portion?
And this morning, uh, the pump was delivered, uh, which is a pretty considerable piece of machinery, and that was loaded into the vault, which was, which has been sunk over here, and that's all being hooked up as we speak. Uh, and so, uh, once the liner is in, I think it'll be, it's sort of tough to see, uh, because it's a lot of piles and stuff, you know, big holes, but it's starting to take shape, and as soon as it is, we'd love to have you up there.
I think seeing the liner, maybe even part of that process, I would find interesting.
Yeah, so we'll give you the dates, when it's gonna begin, and then whenever.
Yeah, I guess we have to go.
Whatever groups you come in.
We, we need to go in, in smaller groups.
In smaller groups, but it's fine, someone can come at one and someone can come at two, it's whatever is convenient for you.
Okay. Just give us your names for the record.
Uh, Jessica and Salaco.
Mark, you see. And, uh, and yeah, you should see it when the liner is in, 'cause that's kinda cool to see, because then we're gonna put a foot of sand on top of it, so it just looks so natural, and then we've gotta grow vegetation around the edges.
So I remember way back when we were looking at this, I had made a suggestion that we also put a monitoring well by Weasup Creek, but it was my understanding, I think, that we couldn't do that, right?
Well, it's an off-premise thing, but I, I'd leave it to Paul to tell you is, is what are you monitoring? There's so much land use in between our property and Weasup Creek.
That could potentially pollute the water.
That's already polluted the water if they're doing that already, that existing, all the developments and houses that are already there.
What's the distance, do we know, from there?
It's about a mile.
About, no, as a crow flies, it's like sixteen hundred feet from here to Weasup.
And with houses in between?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And septic systems.
Septic systems, fertilizer, all that, so we don't know what you're getting.
Old septic.
Old septic.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something none of us in this tape.
It'll be interesting to see if Stony Brook has a team that would just add that as a testing site or something, you know, really just about getting a mooring permit or going and monitoring it, um, just as a point of data.
Yeah. So you're asking, do we have wells between here?
Yeah.
Kate has a question.
Oh, sorry. Mm-hmm, right, that's what I mean, just, 'cause it's interesting to see, so can you explain the methodology in terms of depth of, you know, like how, um, you're saying it's a hundred and thirty feet down for the initial northern monitoring well, but then how many feet down, and how do you calculate that based on like flow?
Well, all the site monitoring wells are the same depth into groundwater, they may be different depths because of different elevations.
Right.
Okay, but they have a screen that goes from five feet above the water table to ten feet below the water table.
Okay.
So we're essentially just capturing the top part of the water table, which is what's first impacted.
That aquifer layer, the same one, of how it goes.
By what's immediately above it, and that's the idea, is we're gonna get recharge coming, rainwater, irrigation water coming in through the turf and through the recharge areas, and immediately beneath that is where the monitoring well is at that level. So we don't have to worry about going with depth, because, you know, what we're pulling out in this supply well, that, you know, this is gonna be between, I think, like eighty and a hundred and ten feet or so, is gonna be stuff that came in.
Further or not.
Up here in the agricultural areas.
There's one other thing to add about the timing of the, of the testing. With Sabonic, uh, we really just said, okay, it's gonna do four times a year, we split it up every three months. Marty Petrovic, in monitoring this now for nigh on twenty years, uh, thought that it would be better to do it in the pattern that Paul said, because we really weren't getting any relevant information on certain times of the year.
In the winter.
So this is gonna be a lot more indicative as to what, of what is, uh, what is happening on the property as opposed to just sort of conveniently doing it every three months.
So when did you, you, what, did you skip December to March or something, or I missed that, I'm sorry?
Correct, yeah, correct, yeah, because that's, uh, there's no use of the golf course, and after you put it down fertilizer, then it can't do anything, so. And then picking up in, like, April, when you've got a lot of rain and recharge, and you're starting to use the golf course, and then the middle of the season, and then in November, where you get more recharge than you do in the middle of the summer, because a lot of it goes up as evaporation and transpiration, so.
So what are those dates, April, May, April?
I think it's April, June, August, November.
Those are the testing dates.
Right, right, you know, we're learning as we go along with all of these golf course monitoring programs, and we're looking to improve them all the time.
Sure.
So that's what we're doing here.
Just one quick question, do you have any kind of a backup plan in case there is a deluge, I mean?
Like, like the rain upstate New York and.
Well, like they had come through the riches, we'd get four inches of rain in two hours, yeah.
Is there, is there any kind of thinking about that, thinking ahead, uh, if there is something like that, so that there's an extraordinary rainfall and flooding, 'cause you're saying the water flows this way?
Yeah, the recharge area, well, the groundwater flows that way.
Yeah.
There's recharge areas on site, which are designed to pick up a certain amount of that, I don't remember offhand how many inches.
They're on the site?
Cycle, three inches.
Oh, yeah, everything is enclosed within the site, and the DRAs have been built to accommodate any kind of mess.
So that's three inches, usually, three inch rainfall.
Right, right.
Which, which is.
Code is.
Which is gonna happen.
Which is probably not what we should be doing these days, but.
Took them a long time to go from two inches to three inches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that number was increased recently too.
Yeah, exactly, we know that.
Right.
So you think that it would be adequate, the, um, what you've got built into the system?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not, not, not for what we're seeing with, with the change in climate, but are, are we able to actually
Well.
manage that now, because we don't really know?
That, that's somewhat independent of the groundwater monitoring system, the groundwater monitoring system doesn't, you know, the reason we have five feet of screen above water table is in case the water table comes up.
Right, and that's what I was getting to, it's like, what if you missed the depth where that particular nitrogen or chemical
Right.
was, so the screen is, it's.
Covers that zone.
It covers the whole zone, right?
Right, yeah.
So you think fourteen wells will do it, right?
Absolutely.
Not anymore?
Yeah, yeah.
And then the mitigation measure, I think you were asking about before, Jessica, that if there is a spike in nitrogen on those, um, monitoring wells towards Weasup Creek, how is that mitigated before it, you know?
We re-sample to confirm that, and then, um, if it's confirmed, then we reduce the fertilizer, or stop the fertilizer in that area.
Right, but what about what's continuing?
They're not gonna, they're not, it's, it's in Weasup Creek.
Yeah, that's, yeah, a little bit, you know.
It's, it's, the monitoring is.
You know, what we're doing here.
Not continue.
Yeah, that's gonna be middle compared to what we're doing with the irrigation well, we're literally pulling out over a ton of nitrogen a year through that irrigation well.
And putting it onto the greens.
And spreading it over the course.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul?
Yeah.
On, on both the bridge and Sabonic, I don't believe there's ever been a trigger on nitrogen, other chemicals? Like I said, that one pesticide or whatever it was, but I don't think nitrogen has ever been an issue. In fact, what I heard was that, for example, we lined the greens on Sabonic, and the scientists have sort of said that this has proven that the way nitrogen is now applied, not like it was indiscriminately in the past, that's such a, a control on it, that there was no need to line these in the first place, because there's no nitrogen getting to that point, so just, that has been part of the EIS.
Yeah, so nitrogen is different than a chemical, say, from the green that gets, you know, it goes past that gate of the monitoring well, so what I'm understanding is the trigger, the alarm bell goes off, and it's like, oh, well, that one got high.
Well, yeah, well, we catch it as quickly as we can, right, and stop doing whatever triggered it.
Sure, but what about the mitigation of what's already occurred that got past that and is gonna continue down into the creek?
These are incredibly sensitive.
Depends on where, probably depends on where it's there.
There's one other thing to remember too, you know, fertilizer, well, for all the compounds, they're unbelievably expensive.
Fertilizers, yes.
So, and, and that goes up with the price of oil and everything, and, uh, so you don't wanna put that too much, because you're wasting money, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm advocating for farmers all of the time, and I know, you know, farmers are not just broadcast spraying anymore or using products, however, it is a valid question and concern that if, you know, Grumman Air Force Base, you know, has a lot of chemicals that are traveling down a plume, there is a mitigation that's required.
Right.
If, poor chance, a chemical that normally wouldn't be used in a residential got through that gate and went down, what happens?
Those are plumes that are literally miles long, you know, hundreds of yards, if not more, wide. This will be, we'll see that's a specific spike in time, and remediate it immediately, and it does dissipate, it does, it's gonna, in all likelihood, still be, you know, as, as the nitrogen loading from the entire area, it's still gonna be reducing the amount of nitrogen going down to Weasup Creek, you might see a little spot coming down for whatever reason, but the other areas will be decreasing, uh, and, and what's, you know, flowing in that pool may be decreasing.
And I, and Marty, and Marty has in his plan, um, some mechanism that if something should happen, and I think that's what we're talking about, because we always say it'll never happen, well, look at the world right now, right? You know, it's snowing in where Saudi Arabia or Iran, some, some.
South Africa.
South Africa, yes. Um, it's, as I remember in some of your papers, that you shut down the system, right?
Yeah.
And that's in Marty's plan?
Yes, yes, that's in his.
It's in here.
Plan and in the ITHMP.
Okay.
And don't forget too, he reviews everything all the time.
Yeah.
And so if there is a product that comes out, there's two things you gotta think about, one's velocity, you don't want the compound to go anywhere, and number two is the toxicity, and he is always looking for products which limit both of those things, therefore making them safer than, uh, you know, we're using ones now that you probably wouldn't even exist in twenty years ago.
But for the record, you, are you saying that if there were a chemical that was detected, obviously, there's a shutdown measure, but like if an oil spill happens, there's a shutdown measure, but there's still an environmental, um, damage that occurs, and I'm wondering if in this plan there is a mitigation obligation to resolve any potential environmental damage?
It, it, there's not a cleanup, um, aspect to it, um, I think would be really difficult, you know, you have to go in and start putting other monitoring wells all around it and tracking this blip, which is, is very much controlled, uh, as we go along, um.
Doesn't Marty suggest anything though, I mean, I think that's a very valid point, that what if, it's the what if here because it's so sensitive.
He, he did not suggest it, and we haven't seen, you know, from his experience, a need for it, and, and like I said, we're, when you look at the overall site, if you have a little, one point where it comes up a little high for one reason, then you stop that, but you're still pumping out for irrigation use a huge amount of nitrogen, that is a mitigating.
I, I understand.
We're mitigating a big plume from these agriculture areas.
I think the board got that part of it, but I think the question, to answer your question, there, there's authority in the agreement and, and the protocol, but not knowing exactly what, what the issue may be, this chemical versus that chemical, otherwise, what the remedy may be, but there is, we're talking about nitrogen loading and pesticides, and the first fail requirement is you stop doing, so you cut it off at the source if there is an issue, but you're also going to investigate, and that's an investigation both by us and the town and Marty Petrovic to, Petrovic, to figure out what, how this occurred, what's the source, and, and what is the remedy? The authority's in there to do that.
So Marty has the authority in the contract?
I did, I did say that before you came in, but, so the point is, there, you know, it depends on the circumstance and what the issue is, but there is all these triggers, and the authority's there for the town to, to ask us to undertake certain things if that is the remedy.
We certainly review why this spike occurred, and, you know, you may not be able to go in and remove whatever happened in that spike, where I'm, that's why I'm saying overall, it's, it's negative, but you can, we will go in and look, okay, what's the drainage situation? How did this occur, right, was, did somebody have to, blow, blow the fertilizer next to, next to that well for some reason or whatever?
What Wayne is saying is that, addressing the question that I have, 'cause I understand hydrogeology, we have taught aquifer, and hydrologic science for kids, but like if something gets past that well, there is a remedy procedure, right? So if a chemical, a pesticide were detected in the well that's just to that edge of the property, sixteen hundred feet from Weasup Creek, and then eventually there is a testing done in Weasup Creek that links that chemical to the golf course, is there a remedy within this?
There is.
There, I think there would be a remedy.
Okay.
There would be some kind of mitigation that would be required to perform, if it popped up in Weasup Creek.
But I would also point out though, is you have the, the other wells that are more internal to that.
Sure.
So that if there was an issue and it was a result of the golf course activity, you're gonna have that detected before it gets to that exterior.
Earlier than it gets to that.
Right, I think what you're hearing, and I think we need to start to pay attention to it all kinds of stuff, is what happens in a catastrophic event, that's all, what is the mitigation and what's the backup plan, et cetera? And with a large project like this, that's why you're hearing our concerns and environmental questions, so, um.
No, I work on resiliency a lot, on, you know, how you, you know, the next storm and what it's gonna look like and how do you mitigate it, so. I certainly appreciate that concern.
Suffolk County homeowners are only allowed to fertilize between April first and October thirty first.
Right.
Are you guys obligated by that same regulation?
I think you're only open till when?
Yeah, I mean, we.
You may not wanna fertilize November.
We, we don't open until, um, April fifteenth, in the middle of April, and then we close the end of October.
So it's about the same period of time, right?
But you're not, as I said, I know homeowners are not allowed, I don't know.
I, I thought that was a general rule, not just for homeowners.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm a homeowner, that's why, I know that law.
That was the question.
Well, I, I don't have any grass.
I don't fertilize anymore, I'm stuck.
And like I said, fertilize is expensive, and if it doesn't, isn't effective during that period, then don't do it.
When I used to, I knew, I knew the, by, by that law.
And frankly, you know how fickle we are in the Hamptons, you know, people don't show up in November, so you don't wanna open up.
So just one, one question to the, whether nitrogen is coming off that property to the west, is it?
Correct.
That was farmland up there?
It's been farmland, yeah.
Right, so it's loaded with nitrogen?
Like I said, the average in that zone is eighteen, right?
Is eighteen, yeah.
And, you know, if there wasn't any farmland there, it would be point five, you know, one maybe, uh, there's significant impact from that.
Yeah, so was that endless, the nitrogen that's in farm soil, I mean, does it ever get depleted, or?
Ultimately, but they have to stop fertilizing, right?
Are they still farming up?
Yeah, they're still actively farmed, oh, absolutely.
And bought the development rights on all those properties, so the expectation is they'll be, continue to be farmed.
To farm.
Dennisewski and Kajowski properties.
It'll be farmed forever, so this is a.
So you have a nitrogen issue forever?
Conservation opportunities.
Yeah.
You know, they can improve their methodologies, but still, you're gonna have the same thing on those row crops, which are a problem.
The farmers, right, yeah. So, um, when we come for a site visit, will this, um, uh, center, control center be in place?
No, no, now, if you guys are coming to see the ponds in the next couple of weeks, no.
No, okay, well, we'll come back, 'cause I'm.
Yeah, you can come back anytime.
See what that's probably an all computerized system and.
Yeah.
And we won't understand any of it.
Yes.
Yeah, like you said, they're just bringing in the irrigation. Like you said, they're just bringing in the irrigation pump now, and the whole control system is gonna be replacing, it's wild.
Yeah, I mean, it's good that we're kicking the tires on this, because, you know, this, as you know, this project was, uh, you know, there was a lot of controversy back both for and against the project, and, you know, it's important for us to now, in our role, really monitor things and make sure that we understand so that we can help to guide and, you know.
Right.
Ensure the trust.
Can I ask you why you only put one irrigation pond in? I'm just curious, as opposed to a secondary irrigation pond?
Well, then, it's really more costly that you gotta then have a separate set of pumps and a separate set of controls and everything else for, for two ponds then. Uh, and it, it becomes a little different design, that's not efficient.
But if you decide, if you find out that you may need one, you would put one in probably, right? For the functioning of the course? You doubt it? Why, the cost of this is, is way up there?
Uh, it would really change the architecture of the golf course tremendously.
What'd you say, three acres, Jim?
One.
Yeah, a little bit more.
Yeah, we've got excess capacity in the ponds to some extent, so.
For stormwater.
For stormwater and for, for the irrigation water.
Okay, so we'll read this, thank you for making these for us. This is like a recap of Marty's, uh, yours.
This is the plan, that's the, that's all, our plan and Marty's review.
This is the start, this is not a review.
This is the plan.
That's the full plan, and then.
This is the, I am.
Yes, the ITHMP, this is the first half, it's a thousand pages, I've read it. Um, Jeff Seaman here in the blue shirt is actually the gentleman who wrote it, and it's basically all the rules and the protocols for how the superintendents and so on, what they're allowed to use, what they're not allowed to use, et cetera.
Is there an executive summary that's two pages?
Uh, we can get you an executive summary, it's two pages, but basically, it's all the rules, and so if something happens, this is the rules and what you can and can't do.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I don't have the expertise to be able to read that and actually absorb it and make sense out of it.
Well, that's why Marty, Marty, that's why Marty reviewed it all, he reviewed the full plan, and then there were two addenda, because this was drafted in two thousand sixteen, and it's been updated all the way through twenty twenty-two with the latest.
And who actually reads and uses that plan?
The superintendent of the golf course.
Superintendent, okay.
Is this the superintendent?
No.
No, but Jeff is a professional superintendent, he wrote it.
You don't even wear glasses.
Well, it's really probably a reference.
I say you don't even wear glasses when you look at it.
He doesn't even know his rules.
Becomes a requirement, if I may, first of all, these documents have been part of the project from its inception, and Marty has, when the town, was front of the town board and provided his input, as it got to the planning board, and as the plan starts to get more refined, location of wells, they're the changes that occur, but the basic protocols have been in place since, for ten years now, on these documents. So you've seen these documents before. Most recently, though, is, these were submitted when the subdivision was pending, you reviewed them and acknowledged those in your finding statement and everything else, but they were submitted and the board requested that Marty take one last look at it, and that's what just occurred, as well as Janice's office looked at it and, and refined it. So that, we had Marty came back with a number of recommendations, which we addressed with Marty and revised the documents, and that has since been reviewed, and the recommendation of this board is that you accept it so that we can get these attached to the agreement that the town board needs to get so that they.
For a contract.
The town can start billing us for the monitoring. And that's essentially what the agreement has, but it also has the other protocols for, um, it speaks to, in addition to the triggering that's within the documents itself, the other remedies that gives the town the authority to do that is in that agreement as well. And so, and once the town board accepts that, this board, as you did on Sabonic and the bridge, wants that, uh, memorialized in a covenant, which we provided drafts, the town attorney and staff has already looked, and it referenced that that requirement to have monitoring and have the ITHMP is an ongoing requirement, no matter who owns the property and operates the golf course.
So has the town board looked at this and accepted this, or what's?
This will, they will, when you adopt the resolution recommending this.
So it's only referral to us? It's referral to us, right?
No.
No.
It goes from you to them.
Yes.
You recommend, like a maintenance bond, you recommend acceptance.
To the town board, they then refer it?
And then we get into contractual agreements, testing.
And I believe that's the resolution, I think Anthony mentioned earlier, is that's the resolution that's before you.
So the South Hampton Town Planning Board hereby approves the Integrated Turf Health Management Plan prepared by Jeffrey L. Seaman, dated June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, and the Groundwater Monitoring Plan prepared by P.W. Grosser, dated June twenty twenty-three, and hereby recommends the town board accept this.
So do you wanna tell us about the report from your perspective, having written it? Just, I think it's important just for the public record too, you know, that we hear from everyone.
Okay, um, my name is, uh, I'm Jeffrey Seaman, I'm owner of East Quack Golf Corporation, and I prepared this report for Discovery Land, and it was submitted, I believe, in two thousand and sixteen. An Integrated Turf Health Management Plan is a dynamic management system, uh, for golf courses. My background is in turf and agronomic sciences and environmental sciences. So, I, for the record, I can tell you, industry-wide, this is the most sophisticated golf course monitoring and management plan that the industry has ever seen. And, you know, without patronizing, I'd like to compliment all the stakeholders in, in both the monitoring that you've been doing at the bridge and Sabonic and, and now here, because this is certainly a step up from even that. And to answer your question, golf courses are exempt in Suffolk County from meeting those deadlines, but we do it very differently. We're using science, so we'll use soil temperature, uh, and plant tissue analysis and, uh, soil samples to determine what we're going to apply, nitrogen and, and otherwise. I don't wanna get into a lot of details on the science unless you have specific questions, uh, along those lines. I know a tremendous amount of work has gone into this project overall, um, and as I said earlier, it's, it's a monitoring plan unmatched by anything, certainly in the United States. So, kudos. You've brought new light, I think, to the industry. I think defensively, golf courses have been somewhat targeted as a large contributor to pesticide, nitrogen loads, et cetera. But through the scientific research that you've been conducting for twenty years, and now this, uh, you've pretty much justified that the management tools available today, um, are, can be implemented, and, and the environmental stewardship that all superintendents are credentialed to abide to really do work. And you can still have an excellent playing surface on top of that.
Can you talk about how you use this every day? Because I imagine that it's really just a reference when you're gut-checking your instinct, perhaps?
Well, it was, uh, my goal personally. I'm a certified environmental professional, and I'm a certified golf course superintendent, which is the highest level you can meet. Academically, I also have a credentials, master's level, et cetera, in those sciences. Twenty years ago, I saw a real need to sandwich these two issues together, and I guess I started on this project when the Becker Brothers first got involved fifteen years ago. I lived in East Quack, um, on Lewis Road, I'm very familiar with the farm preservations, as well as the drainage issues and some of the chemicals that have been legacy. I had a private well with dactyl, so I know exactly what the concerns of, of the local people are. So I was pretty dedicated personally to make sure that this worked to the best science available that we had, and it, I have to compliment Discovery, they didn't hold back on any of the recommendations that I felt were necessary to improve on the turf management and monitoring that had been done at the other two, excuse me, the other two golf courses.
And so how does a superintendent, just, um, as part of their everyday job, is this used as a reference manual? Or does someone read the thousand pages and then go on?
Well, it's, it's faulty, you have to understand that, uh, the superintendent is aware of all the parameters that are put in the management plan. He's been an integral part of, of this entire development, together with, with Marty. There's been a lot of back and forth and reviews and list and lists of pesticides that have been eliminated. Remember here in New York State, DEC regulates all use of pesticides, and on Long Island, they're the most restrictive because of the aquifer. We refine that list even further. And I'm a certified pesticide applicator in New York and in New Jersey. New Jersey goes guys regulations for applications of fertilizer, we don't have that here. So I've been examined and tested for those applications, which I have integrated into this plan, whether or not that's required in New York or not. We're looking at putting down, um, a tenth of a pound of nitrogen, you know, per thousand square feet. So that's, uh, that's a pretty small amount. Our goal is not to make the grass grow too quick, if we do, we have to mow it more frequently, it gets thatchy, it builds up organic layer. And that deters the drainage that we're looking for, that restricts the root development. So we're working with the physiology of the plant in this plan, not just parameters of chemistry or, or restrictions on application dates, et cetera. We're actually, um, building a healthy soil and plant system, uh, that should be self-sustaining.
This is really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, very helpful, very interesting to really appreciate your expertise.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the information, appreciate it. So Anthony, you've got this resolution in front of us, you're going to dress it up, right?
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I wanna make sure the dates are correct, and if the last resolve is, is, is actually correct, that's the statement.
Any other questions?
I'm moving.
Nope, moved by Dennis, second by Gorian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. Thank you, we'll call you when we come for a site visit. You'll let us know when the line is written?
I'll let, yes, I'll let Anthony know.
Let Anthony know.
Yeah, and I'll turn forward to you.
Okay.
Believe on the agenda you're looking at, I have, I think it's ten and eleven, Farrell Butterlane and then two two five, two five, one Butterlane, is that how you say it?
Number ten is Farrell Butterlane, yeah.
Yep, that's right. So, um, this is, uh, we've looked this before, the next two.
I think Carl is not here, is this Carl's application?
He was.
It is Carl's application.
Yeah, he's, I just saw.
He's just outside.
You're on.
Uh, so the first one was the subdivision component of this project, you might recall, it's on Butterlane, it's north of the railroad, the LI forty zoning district, um, the proposal is for a three-lot subdivision, um.
Anthony, just tell us what we're looking at, because there's two parcels here.
Oh, my apologies, there are actually two parcels as part of this application, but we're looking at it as combined, as one, so, my apologies.
As one, okay, but it's the whole thing.
But it's the whole thing that you see here.
Right, and Carl, you realize that there are, there's Mount Everest's of dirt on this land, and has been, they have been there for several years, and they are a health hazard. So I've personally complained about this any number of times, Anthony could testify to that. I've taken photos, et cetera, you've been to the site, you know it. I don't know what they're gonna do with that, you know? Here we are sitting, you know, you're asking for approvals and to move stuff forward, and the site is a detriment to the health and welfare of the community. So.
On the, um, to that point, well, let me, let me do this first, Carl. So the first application that we're looking at, number ten, Farrell Butterlane, is the three-lot subdivision, um, one, two.
That large one?
The three, yeah, three, here's Butterlane, there had been before the zoning board, um, for a lot with variance for this piece here, and then there's a ten-foot flag strip to the back, um, obviously, the plan will have common access for all the, for the.
But they're merging it, they're merging it before they subdivide it?
Yeah, well, we're treating, yeah, it's basically one property that we're looking at, the two properties that have separate tax path numbers, are basically being re-divided or subdivided into these three lots as configured, but this three-lot configuration is the combination of the two lots there. So we have then the pending subdivision application, and the next one on the agenda is the site plan component, which, which I'll get to. For the purposes, we're gonna be deeming both applications incomplete, um, and I have checklists for both, for, for Carl. Uh, in addition to, we're waiting on the engineer's review, uh, plus we have to do SEACRA, um, you can't segment, um, SEACRA review. Uh, so the site plan component, which includes a hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet of mini storage and, and nearly a hundred parking spaces, that fifty parking space threshold is what throws it into a type-one action, so we're gonna have to do a coordinated review. So on the first one here for Farrell Butterlane, I'm recommending that we deem the application incomplete. They also haven't received, health department for this yet, this is always the catch twenty-two, the health department won't issue their approval for a subdivision until the SEACRA is done, but SEACRA is gonna take a little time here, it's a type-one action, so we've gotta go through the.
But don't we have to do the subdivision first?
Well, yeah, first, yes, ultimately, yes, but we're gonna deem that application incomplete, is my recommendation, what we have to.
Did we begin coordination yet?
I'm, I'm waiting for, I want the engineer's comments first, 'cause I wanna make sure there's no questions about, um, uh, stormwater control or any, you know, the elements there before I coordinate for the agency. And I'm anticipating, um, that we would probably put it back on in a couple of weeks to start the coordination. But in any case, the first one here, number ten, the subdivision application is incomplete.
Okay, I also just wanna say it's APOD call, New State Archaeological, there's not a tree on the property, and it's massively disturbed.
These are, this is, they have two different names, but it's the same?
Yeah.
Piece of property?
Yes, same, it's, yeah, two different application names, same, same property.
And the first?
Property, that's correct, yes.
And the first is the subdivision?
First one, Farrell Butterlane is the name of the subdivision.
Okay.
That is incomplete for a number of reasons.
And that's the, the, well, they're all, they're all, they both, 'cause they're the same, have the piles of dirt on.
To Jackie's point, by the way, so the property was, this whole area was farmed, um, so there was never any trees on the property, but you raise a question about the disturbance of this property, which is, this property's been disturbed, it's been utilized, it's been, you know, it's been.
It was a construction site, they were chopping?
And then this question's been raised before, and this will be part of what I try to find out, is, that's all the remainder of disturbance, um, which technically is supposed to be subject to a stormwater review and approval, uh, which was never done. So there may be questions from the engineer, so that's why, you know, we'll, we'll see. But again, this one, we'll, we'll deem this incomplete, and then we'll go to the site.
This is Marty's?
And can you just highlight what's missing?
There's the health department first and foremost, okay? Uh, and then a number of mapping items, and I'll, I'll send, do, I apologize for not attaching it. Um, it's mostly the mapping items and the engineer's review.
Can you also just go to the overhead to orient us exactly where it is?
It's north of the train.
Marty's, that's just.
So Marty's is where?
But it's Lake Hollow.
Marty's is on.
That was Marty's up there.
You're just talking about Marty's.
That's where Claire and I took the two years to get that done.
Which one was Marty's, actually?
Right on the other side of the entrance, go up, that's Marty's.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. You got a question, Matt?
Nope.
I may, I, maybe I'm getting ahead of us here, but, and just glancing through the resolution, which I know we're saying this is incomplete, but it says a flag strip of ten point oh one was granted by the ZDA. Does that mean there's gonna be a ten-foot wide driveway?
No.
Okay.
There will be an easement.
That's for road frontage.
That was for road front purpose.
Oh, that's, okay, okay.
There'll be an easement, you know, ultimately, what's gonna happen, as you'll see from the next application, is these three sites are going to be operating as a single, you know.
As a single entity.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Incomplete.
That variance, I just wanna put this. Carl Benacasa, one eight, one, eight sixty Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the applicant. With respect to that variance, that called for a four-lot subdivision, so we do need to modify the terms of that variance, but no, no substantive changes will be. But no, no substantive changes will be made. I just wanted to note that for the record. We've applied for that modification, and we expect to be on the agenda shortly.
And that's the site.
Yes, we'll do that one next. I just want you to take an action on on number ten.
Okay, so D being the number Farrell Butterlane, incomplete motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent.
And then the number eleven is two-two-five and two-five-one. That's the actual two separate property addresses, you know, the two separate properties that make up.
It's a site plan.
And that's the site plan component. So you'll see here, they're Morton buildings. Ultimately, you're showing, I think it's roughly a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet of mini storage facility here. Ninety-seven parking spaces, some outdoor storage area. This application's also incomplete. There were some mapping items, plus we got to get through the SEACRA review, and obviously, we got to get more information on that.
Why am I remembering a gym? Was that a totally different?
No, that's across the street.
Not far from here.
Okay, all right.
Also, also Carl's project.
Butterlane's on the.
So this application's also incomplete.
Okay, motion to deem two-twenty-five and two-fifty-one Butterlane incomplete?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent.
Number eleven, this is the Charros LLC. Oh, twelve, I'm sorry. Actually, you are to counterclockwise. You know this area. This is the Flying Point Road intersection there. The former diner. This is adjacent to what was Pier One. I believe that's becoming a Tesla.
Tesla.
So this is just a request for a pre-submission conference. The application.
Wait a minute.
This is the new, one of the new buildings that went up?
It's a new application.
This is for the back of the building, behind the diner, right?
Yeah.
Oh, behind the diner.
It looks like one of the ones on.
Trying to get my, we're trying to get our orientation.
You're busy.
Just these two. I go home after this one. Carl Bonacasa.
I'll meet you on the site, by the way, if you'd like to.
So, yeah, so now you know this is for an eight-thousand-square-foot office, medical office building, behind the diner site along the highway there.
Is it behind the Tesla facility?
No, behind the diner.
Tesla is east of it. Tesla's the old Pier One site.
Can you pull up the overhead? Could you pull up the?
Right next. I thought there was, there was workforce housing back there.
So Carl Bonacasa, eight-sixty Montauk Highway, Watermill, for the applicant, Mr. Charros, who's here with us. The, just behind the diner, there's an unimproved piece of land, and that's what we're talking about, just south of the diner. Well, whatever it is, lunch and lobster roll.
Lobster roll.
Yeah.
Lobster roll, yeah.
It'd always be the diner to me.
With new striped orderings.
Do you guys see the?
We're looking at the orientation is different, yeah. So Montauk Highway is up there.
No, well, it's twenty-seven, and then.
There you go.
Yes, that's better, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. So this is, this is Tesla, this is the diner, and this is where the building is going.
I see.
Where's the rear access road at?
That is right there.
Okay.
And that's built all the way to Tesla.
That goes all the way to Tesla.
It goes all the way to Tesla. I got to go out there and check to make sure it doesn't need to be upgraded or something. I think it's in pretty good shape, at least on the diner property. You see the elevations there, at least the concept elevations. That's, you know, just the concept. This is a pre-submission, so the idea is that we're going to have the pre-submission conference. You could ask questions. The public will come out, and then we'll prepare a report with all the issues. You know, Carl, just right on, you know, I don't want to get too much into it, because that's what the purpose of the report is for. But, you know, it's a big building, and it's very close to that road in the back there. If you look at the site plan, just, you know.
How many thousand square feet is?
About eight thousand. So you'll see here, and this is just a concept plan, but this is the building with all the parking. This is the the access road to the back there. So that's pretty close to the access road. So that might be something that we got to look at a little.
Could you show me again with the cursor, because I didn't see it?
Oh, yes. So this is the proposed building.
Yes.
And then this is the existing road in the back, the cross-access.
That comes out on Flying Point.
Yes.
So we got to look at some design a little bit here, I think. And the architecture looks decent.
That comes out on Flying Point, right?
Ultimately, yes. It was all the way through. This was a very well-planned, commercial development, all things considered. The intersection is terrible over there, so I think we did a lot of good.
Yeah.
Calling for a traffic circle.
Yeah. So this one I have written down, scheduling the pre-submission for August twenty-fourth.
Well, just a heads up, we've been looking to get charging stations on these commercial sites now. There's four, six charging stations.
And any other?
Which are relatively easy to put in. When you're putting your parking lot, everything runs underground. It can be at the edge, the periphery of, they don't have to be up against the building. It can be at the peripheries a lot, but we're looking to get those in, absolutely.
You'll see, a general comment will come out of the pre-apply report, that form already.
Yeah.
Talks about the charging station, but other green, sustainable elements that can be incorporated. Green infrastructure, you know, the drainage wells or the.
You've got like a white EPDM roof, but that could be good for solar.
Yeah, solar, yeah. So we've been incorporating the safe cyclines.
Sustainability features.
We've got it, we've got a nice, a nice paragraph that explains it all.
I'm sure you do.
Are there like four offices here, Carl? Is this what attention for?
How many, how many offices?
Four medical offices?
Well, there's, actually, there's room for twenty, I think the square footage allows for twenty-seven different office uses, but how many?
Well, yeah, the number of office uses is important. So, so what will happen out of this, Jackie, is I'll do the calculate. It's eight thousand square feet. So it's one per one-eighty apartment for office space, but medical office has one per one-fifty, I think. So there's a bigger parking threshold. So I'm going to do an analysis, so we know what the parking, you know, issue is there.
So they may have to reduce the size of the building.
Because, you know, my guess is, is that they came up with this number based on a Health Department flow. Try to maximize based on Health Department, which which is logical.
And zoning, and with zoning.
Yeah, of course, of course.
This is HB.
The big city hospitals are moving out here.
I see.
Because we're here.
The aging population, huh?
Yeah, no, there's a lot of medical office.
Lots. This whole, this whole complex is.
Sure. I actually had recommended to the applicant, the one that Gabe Areola did in Hampton Bays came out pretty nice, actually. That white medical building came out really nice, actually.
Yes.
So that's not a bad idea, you know, concept there. So I scheduled this one for August twenty-fourth.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor, two absent. So August twenty-seventh, public hearing.
Is it twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, what'd you say?
Twenty-fourth, I believe. Twenty-fourth, is it?
You're here for that.
I'm here for them.
Twenty, it's not in here.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, thank you.
Well, you're out the next one, July twenty-fourth.
I'm not, that's one, and then you're at twelve.
Number thirteen is forty-five Fanning Avenue. This is the one that I'm taking over. We did a pre-application on this one. If you remember, there was, this was the one that Jackie was working, I believe it was Jackie, where this issue of this right-of-way to the north here came into question.
Where are we, Anthony? Do you see?
Thirteen.
Number thirteen, forty-five Fanning Avenue.
By Carl.
Which is in Hampton Bays.
Okay, Hampton Bays.
There's a two-lot subdivision subdivision application pending for this property. It's in the LI forty zoning district. It's kind of existing residence.
If I may interrupt, Board Member Catalinato has just returned from his vacation.
Brutal, I think.
What did I miss? Let's start from the beginning.
All right. So it's a two-lot subdivision. We did the pre-apply report, which raised the issue about the right-of-way here to the north, because they're proposing to utilize it, so there were questions about rights and all the rest of it. In any case, they submitted, they did an extension on the pre-application report. They submitted a request to extend and waive the policy so they could get another year out of the report, which I don't have an issue with. So basically, this would then extend or renew the pre-application report for this project until July ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
By Dennis?
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five in favor?
Abstained.
One extension and one absent.
Welcome back.
And then the next one, which I believe is Lily Court. Also, I'm taking that over. This was one, I believe it's a lot-line modification, as a matter of fact. This is a property on Montauk Highway, and that is two lots that come on Lily Court. This is in Chicago Hills section, right off the Middle Pond Road there, and south of the highway. There's a lot-line modification. I believe these two lots here are basically getting some of this property over here, you know, a little bit.
Is that part of the subdivision?
No, they're, they're, it's not. That piece is not part of the subdivision. So that's basically it, is that doing a lot-line change to get some more land. This is another one where they're probably dealing with the Health Department, because you have to get Health Department approval for these things, which is often proving to be a nightmare for the applicant, but we're also getting a lot of septic systems upgraded as a result of it, because they're mandating that they do it before they get subdivision approval. So I'm just recommending that this project, this pre-application, also be extended and renewed, and this will be good until June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Till June twenty-four, okay. Motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Jackie, just real quick, they eventually will be signed, but M-four lumber holding.
Okay, I'm taking a vote.
Oh, sorry about that.
So I had a motion by Gloria and a second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, five and, six in favor, one absent. Now, what were you saying?
M-four lumber holding, just a signature.
What item? Is that an, what, add-on?
It's an add-on, that was, yeah.
So that's twenty.
And I'll be here this evening with our new planner, everyone. Who didn't? Chuck Prisco. He's not here, by the way. So he'll be here this evening. And CBS is being adjourned.
It is? It's off the agenda?
Right, it's being adjourned, so it's on the agenda.
Was there a public notice?
Yeah, so they'll show up when they're going to be told.
Okay.
That's all I listened.
Huh. Okay, so where are we? Rolling Hills? Janice, do you want, do you want to, why don't you do your referral?
Do you want to wait, or it's up to you?
Well, what do we have? We have Jeff. She's happy to wait. Jeff, let's finish you.
Yeah, I'll finish. I got two long discussions, though.
You do? And Janice?
Oh, yeah, so I'll, I'll do it after, yeah.
Okay, so Jeff, come. Rolling Hills?
We'll do the first one, then after that, Janice.
There's the first one.
Pines, Pines East.
Oh, that's number one? We're going Pines East. Okay, Jeff, thank you.
So this is an easement amendment at thirty-four Corbett Drive. Myself and counsel, along with the applicant and property owner, have been discussing this project for quite some time now. He purchased this piece here, thirty-four Corbett Drive, lot eighty-one, I believe, in Pines East subdivision in East Quag. The property itself is encumbered by slope and scenic easements. Those scenic easements do reduce the building envelope for similar family dwelling on the property. The applicant would like to reconfigure the scenic and slope easement, so that it, which I'll show you here.
We don't, we don't have anything in the packet.
Yeah, so.
We just have maps.
So this is essentially just for a discussion for now, considering that this is kind of a newer action requested by the applicant for the plan itself. Kind of wanted to gather some information from the planning board in regards to how to fill up the reconfiguration first and foremost, and then draw up a resolution with any recommendations afterwards. So no action will be taken for this. We'll discuss it, and then I'll come back for it with a resolution.
Okay, so is anything impacted by reconfiguring the easements?
So we thought that was the case. If you see here.
There's a recharge there, isn't there?
So that's a recharge basin at the corner property, a corner piece of the property right here, which fronts on Maggie and Corbett. So we, and you notice the.
I'm sorry, Jeff, could you just describe the, each of those?
Those are all easements.
They're all weird easements.
So, yes, they're all the same, except for there's a twenty-five-foot natural vegetation retention buffer, which does grant the applicant to gain access to the property.
The gray, the gray area is buildable.
Right.
The white around it is where the, all the easements are, and that's.
Thank you. That's.
This might be clear.
Isn't it just the help person?
No.
Here, actually, for you. I have some copies for you.
So the gray, the shaded area is buildable.
Yeah.
Shaded area.
This is, this is the before. This is the before. Show them the shaded area in the after.
This is the before, the second.
Jeff?
Yes.
Show them the shaded area in the after picture, because I think they'll understand that.
And this is how they buy it, so he has at least a building. Otherwise, he doesn't have a building, not at all here.
Get you some more copies. So this. The shaded area is where he's allowed to build. The area that's, that's essentially clear, but striped, is this, all the scenic and slope easements.
Well, he doesn't have a building on.
So he doesn't.
In the first one.
Well, he could have a very strange house.
I'll say.
So we assume that the intent of the scenic and slope easement was to provide some level of protection for the recharge basin. We did refer this to the town engineer. He thinks that there is no real impact on recharge basin, and that the scenic and slope easement can be reconfigured. So we did receive confirmation from the approval from the town engineer for the reconfiguration, which is this here, which places the easements essentially to the border of the property. It opens up the middle of the property for development.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
This is, this, the easements themselves are not necessarily described to a degree in the covenants, which is why this is more like a map change or a map amendment, so to speak. So this won't necessarily require refiling of covenants or whatnot, which is kind of what took a little bit of time for us to process, the application itself. Also, the applicant received an HOA approval from the HOA of Pines East that they can, and they can move forward with a change of this scenic and slope easement. So that's the crux of the request. Like I said, no action today, but.
But how do we, how do we protect the easement areas without a covenant?
It is already protected, and the amounts are all the same. And the only thing that the easements were specific to is that the homeowners, the original easement retained unto the grand tour, the ability to say no in the event there was a change requested. It was, it wasn't really a town. These weren't like scenic open space easements in the sense of a town's open space thing. So what, but they did require homeowner consent. So we went through that process, and Mr. Avani got that consent from the homeowners association. And so now we can go ahead and approve the reconfiguration of the building envelope in conjunction with maintaining those easements.
Makes sense.
It took a while.
What is the height of the buildable area compared to the lots next to it?
So this one has the contour lines at the height of a hundred and thirty feet, and the lowest point is at a hundred feet, which is within the recharge area. Now, in comparison to the neighboring properties, it varies. And if I go to the aerial, you'll notice that the slope and scene easements are almost all over.
Oh, wow.
So it's, doesn't necessarily answer your question, but you kind of get an idea of what we're dealing with. Each lot is a little different.
Bring up like a GIS that has topography or something?
Yeah.
To see like where crosses over the houses.
This, it'll give you the contour lines, but it won't be that great.
Mr. Avani is also here, so he could probably, I know he's like, he knows this very.
I could answer that with any question.
Yeah.
Why don't you just come up and give us your name?
You can take a look, too, Kate. I don't know if this helps you at all. It's pretty busy, but.
You can sit here.
That's the variation.
I guess what I'm asking, which is probably easier for you to answer, and go ahead and just introduce yourself.
My name is Thomas Avani, I'm a East Quag resident, and I'm the owner of the property.
Welcome.
So is your house a lot higher than the other houses next to it? You know, will you have like a castle situation?
It will not be, and so part of the reason, many reasons to do that. One is obviously consolidate the building envelope, to make a contiguous easement throughout the. easement throughout the site instead of the fractured easement. Also, the way the site is currently configured with easements, you would likely place the house on the top. That is a high point in the community. That's about a hundred and thirty-four feet, probably one of the highest points in that community. So the house would be the highest house in that community. So my goal is to put the house into the front slope where there's, you can see the blue line. There's a current easement there right now. So it's to nestle the house into the slope. By doing so, the house to the property's east, right next to it, yeah, right there. That, I would argue, that's probably about a hundred and twenty feet. Because it sits on, you can see the, the geomap. It sits towards the, yeah, exactly, right there. So the high point of this thirty-four Corbett is about one thirty-four, one thirty to one thirty-four. So the house next to it is sitting on about one twenty-five, I would say. The house that I'm proposing or currently working on would probably even be below that height because it'll be nestled into the slope. So.
Well, it gives you a better building envelope certainly, so we can figure the easements.
Yeah, it's advantageous from a building perspective because it's straightforward. It allows me to minimize the impact on the site because I could do a singular driveway going in. And it allows me to not have the house on the top. I don't want the house on the top. I think it would really stand out. And.
That looks like quite a large house.
That's about forty-three hundred, forty-four hundred square feet right now. That's what I'm working on. And I'm trying to keep it, I'm trying to distance the house as far away from the neighbors as possible just for privacy sake and just to maintain. You see the access right now is on two sides and the proposal is to completely shut off the access. And so that the recharge is contiguous to the easements all the way around the site and the easements adjoining the site on the other properties.
So you'd access off of Maggie?
I would access off of Maggie, correct.
That was one of the conditions of the approval from the HOA, wasn't it?
Yeah, they were fine.
So we might do a covenant for that, just so we have it on record there.
Okay.
That doesn't, it doesn't affect the ability of it to happen, it just records it.
No problem.
It looks, was it cleared?
No, the top is. Right now, if you go back to the previous, if you go to the GIS, the top of it is cleared. Yeah, the high, the top plateau is clear. The balance of the site is still unclear.
So it looks like somebody maybe before you was getting ready to build up there and then changed their mind.
Yeah, prior to. They tried to make it attractive by mowing down the landscape.
Trees.
It, it was pretty evident at the time of the subdivision too, so I think right after, right after they received signature from the planning board, they kind of create this little buildable area, flat area it looks like.
It was a little higher. It was about one thirty-four. That was a peak actually in this community. It's probably one of the second highest peaks in the community. And then someone came and flattened it out to make it presentable, I assume, to buy.
As a building spot.
Correct.
Clearing, moving an issue or?
And if you're in the APOD.
We're in, yeah, Aqua for Protection Overlay District, yeah.
How's the runoff going to affect your building envelope there?
I mean, I'm right next to a recharge. That recharge is lower than, you know, that, that recharge descends down in the community. So it's basically a basin that captures water. So anything from my site will be captured in that basin. And there's currently two culverts that run from these streets into that recharge area.
So you'll have to kind of direct it around the house or something?
Yeah, I mean, I would direct it, I would direct it down slope and so that it doesn't erode the site. I would direct it all down slope and then have a culvert probably at the bottom of the site where the driveway entrance would be, and a culvert running it almost next to the culvert that runs to it from the two streets right now, so that there's no, you know, runoff erosion going on.
I, I thought that town engineer would require you to keep all your water on, on your site, not direct it to a recharge area.
I certainly can do that and I have no problem doing that if that's, you know.
Well, three inch rainfall, you're gonna have to keep, that's for sure. A three inch rainfall.
Absolutely. I can put it, there's no problem. I can keep it on site. Whatever the board wishes with that. I would think I could, you know, have it directed, appropriately directed to the recharge, but I'm fine with, I'm fine with that either way.
So you have it listed as CR one twenty subdivision R sixty. Are those just for setbacks?
So it's, it's split. It's split zone. So if you look at the actual subdivision map, there's a section of the subdivision that's one twenty, another section that's R sixty, so just for.
So does it go through that lot?
No, it doesn't go through the lot.
So what is that lot, the CR one twenty?
No, CR one twenty was prior to the development, so there was a.
So it's R sixty.
Right, it's R sixty and R forty. So there's a hundred and fourteen lots, seventy-five of them are R forty and balance is R sixty.
So I would not, I don't think I would include the CR one twenty. That's confusing.
I'll remove that for you.
Well, I think it all makes sense to us, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's interesting because I have a situation in my neighborhood where there's topography changes that have really, you know, impacted other homes, even though there's slopes and everything, but the house is not placed as you're saying. It's very much taller and infringing upon. So I wonder, and I emailed Janice and I had kind of a short discussion about it on email, but I wonder what your opinion is, Janice, of topography changes as part of zoning and where you see that going and is this precedent setting and how should we think about it?
Yeah, sure.
I would like that. Since you're here.
Since you live in this room.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
It's okay. I would just say that it, it is an issue, like in this case, you had come and said, was there a site plan? And I said, only in certain subdivisions do they do that when there's known slopes.
Sure, yeah.
And then there's like covenants to come back and where the board works on orienting the house. And we're, we're seeing a lot more instances where people are abnormally raising grade. So you're, he, you know, you were once, everybody was flat and then somebody bought the lot and now you're up here and everybody's down here and now, and maxing out.
The lot.
The lot setback. So it's sort of shocking and.
Right.
Um, I'm trying to get a handle on that. I think that's sort of the next zoning frontier. And after Kate brought it up, I kind of, you know, talked about it with my quarterly, we have like quarterly meetings with code enforcement and we all meet together, a fire marshal and a building. And, and I, and brought this up to say, you know, this is not the first time. People complain about this all the time and also we think, you know, it has to do with like, you know, you want the, the high ceilings in the basement. So everything kind of just creeps up higher and higher, but, you know, we've had even personal friends call me up and say, you know, everything was fine until this house like is looming over me now and now I'm miserable. And so we're just, you know, in this case, he's trying to
He's Laura, yeah.
Situate everything to nestle in and be the way it should be tucked in. Other people are just sort of doing.
Right, right, yeah. So you're finding that they're, they're altering the topography by putting.
Yes, and I mean, the whole town should probably raise its grade up, right, for coastal erosion reasons? So it's not the worst thing to want to raise things up, but at the same time, it's, it's kind of problematic when one is looming over another and that's where you get that.
It's not, I couldn't believe, yeah. Iniquity, yeah.
In a, and, and then the way, and I talked about it with our chief about how the pyramid law is written from average to natural grade and then, but what about when you change the grades so significantly?
Visually, yeah.
Now you're not taking it from here, you're taking it from a new grade.
Natural grade. Not a natural grade, yeah.
And now you're breaking the pyramid because you're on a different topo line, right?
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, interesting.
So. I, you know, I would just say that it's, it is an issue and I would like to look at that more.
So I mean, just to not pick on yours, but it's important that we look at the precedent of it. I think you're doing it correctly.
No, I don't think at all.
Not in your case. Yeah.
I'll be honest with you, you know, if anyone else would look at this, it's, oh my gosh, I could see, if you go to the top and you put a ladder up twenty feet, I can see the ocean and I can see the bay. That's how high this point is. And that's wonderful from that perspective, but it's not contextual at all with what's going on in the community and certainly not with the landscape.
And not what you want.
What?
And not what you want.
Well.
And when everybody's, when you open up the woods and all the trees around you grow, you no longer have the view, which, which happened to me.
Right, so. You know, I mean, it's, you know, that happens to be a particularly beautiful community. It has, you know, it's Aqua for Protection Overlay. It's, you know, it's part of the pine barrens overlay and so there's a, you know, we're surrounded by beautiful preserve and there's beautiful hills there. So I think the idea would be to try to keep the architecture and integrate the architecture and the surrounding environment, so.
That's kind of all we really ever hoped for, but sometimes that doesn't always work out.
Yeah, sure. It's unique. So can you just add those overlay districts?
Yep.
You don't know APOD and pine barrens.
Right, and also in addition to the reconfiguration, we're not reducing the square footage in totality.
No.
Of what's existing, so we want to make sure we have point. It's sort of an equal status proposal, I'll call it, in that I'm not, I'm gaining a consolidated building envelope. I'm not gaining, I'm actually losing a thousand square feet of buildable space. My intent, and the revised building envelope, if it were to be completely clear, is still, you know, forty thousand square foot versus allowable fifty-five thousand square feet. So I minimize that and I'll be clearing less than that, so.
I'm actually happy that we have the flexibility to, to achieve something like this. You know, sometimes with code, we're like boxed in to a compromised idea, right? This is, this is a good idea when you have the.
Interestingly enough, I believe that when this community was developed and sort of going through all the records and all the foils and all the maps that I collected, I believe the intent, having the, there's a, the tax map, the final plat this is on, has all the tables for these easements on the map. And so, and the grants are all broad grants. There's no meets and bounds on them or anything. So I do believe it was set up and designed because of the topography in this community to allow for that flexibility so that it would simply be an amendment to the map, an amendment to be taken on the map.
Yeah, makes sense.
And the fact that you have the HOA support is a critical piece in this case too, yeah.
Yeah. And as council said, we should incorporate that, maybe make that into a covenant. Okay, so let's vote on this.
No, no action.
Oh, there's no actions, discussion, well.
Correct. I'll bring it back, the resolution, and I'll include a covenant and the legal document associated with that as part of the recommendations.
And the description, APOD and whatever. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. So.
You're here.
Go ahead, Janice.
You're here.
Just Wayne.
Those, who is, who are they?
This is Wayne, but it's, it's, he's filming in.
He's used to being here.
Elliston Lester, completion, is that?
So I say, yes, I say two lots subdivision, pre-application.
Yeah.
Address is two hundred forty-one North Lane.
Two.
Yep, two forty-one North Lane.
Elliston, it's a two forty-one North Lane. Did you just say that?
Yes, two forty-one North Lane, yep. So yeah, this is in your backyard, right?
Is this by the cemetery?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So they're proposing a three lots subdivision correction.
Three lots. So is it complete?
This is complete. It meets the standards for a pre-application review. So at this point, we'd set the public hearing for.
Hearing?
Did they submit a cluster?
Uh, no.
Did they request a waiver?
Uh, they're requesting a waiver, yes.
Okay.
So public hearing August twenty-fourth, if it's still available.
There's no open space around there?
No, there's no.
Just the cemetery.
Just the cemetery.
The open space of the cemetery.
And they're not going to complain.
They're not going to complain. August twenty-fourth, Kristen, is, right, okay. So motion to deem is complete and scheduled public hearing for August twenty-fourth. Motion by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor. Opposed extensions, five, six in favor. We're all here. I'm sorry, we have a full board.
One absent.
Yeah, one absent.
Oh, no, George is gone, sorry. We've been, six in favor, one absent.
Yeah.
We've been growing through the meeting.
Yes, growing, expanding. So that's it for you, Jeff?
Yeah, I have two more.
He has.
I have a psych disturbance and a pre-application stock report.
Do you want to go? Yeah, let Janice go, because she's got a long way for home.
First item I have is actually maintenance bond release, item number nineteen.
Nineteen is.
That's canal boathouses, canal property, that's in boathouses.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the phase one landscaping and recommending the lease to the town board and it's, the amount is sixty-one thousand, one eighty-two, sixty-seven.
Hundred eighty-two thousand, sixty-seven cents.
Yeah, and so they'll be releasing that back because the plants are in good health and they're looking to get over there.
Good. All right, so motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
I just, as a side note, saw the sidewalk from those boathouses that you were referring to to go down to the platform.
The whole public access.
So we haven't gone down yet, but I said to my daughter the other day, oh, one of my colleagues told me you can go all the way down there, so we'll report back. Thanks for telling us about that.
That was a ten year fight to get it and it's there, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I'm taking, I'm taking the vote, so it's six and.
In September, after the traffic.
Sorry, Jen.
See, just wait till I take the vote, that's why it keeps my head straight. Six in favor, one absent, okay? Uh, so we're going, Jeff, so he left, Jeff. All right, Janice, continue.
So the next is the town board referral section.
Right.
And the first one is amendment to chapter two forty-seven, open space. Here's the code. Pass those around. That one's for you, Jackie, and maybe the rest is Dennis.
Okay.
So you'll notice, and you're, you're the best to ask this about, you know that PRD is planned residential development, chapter two forty-seven, open space. But did you know that the state enables us to do a PRD on any zone? The way our code, it's PRD residential.
Residential.
But no one restricts you in the enabling legislation to say, well, you know, there's this feature over here on a commercial property and let's see a cluster plan. If they're coming into subdivide. So no, recognizing this, it's this, you know, just a simple.
You want to call it PCD?
Yes.
Good.
And so that way you have, so it's, you know, a couple of underlined areas. Obviously, the cluster, let's say it's highway business. We say you can only cluster two buildings at most. You're not going to cluster like five lots into some giant, but we still have to maintain our other standards of articulating buildings and making sure they're not obtrusive, et cetera. So the idea would be only up to two clustered buildings, you know, max of thirty thousand, assuming it would, it's.
What's the max, you have max square footage?
So on B, two forty-seven, six dimensional regulations.
Where is that, ten, what page?
I'm sorry, page four. So you, you see, it just adds like, you know, that you, you would either, you'd have to submit a standard plat and our site plan schematic if required, you know. So if you, you notice or if somebody says, look, I see, you know that I'm next to this feature, resource, et cetera. And then in the dimensional requirements, you know, it's all talking about manor houses or clustering residential structures here. It's saying commercial buildings may be similarly clustered and aggregated, but in no case shall any one building exceed thirty thousand square feet in a commercial zone.
The big issue here, Janice, is, in paragraph B, is that the size limitation on commercial structures was specifically designed to preclude big box Walmart style buildings.
Right. Sure. That's why we capped it at thirty, because big box Walmart is sixty, a hundred.
Well, big, well, thirty, thirty is a lot. What, what, how does, how does thirty now become, why did we cap it at fifteen? Why did the town board years ago cap it at fifteen, not twenty or twenty-five or thirty?
Right. They, you know, some may say it's an arbitrary number that was selected. I mean, we were talking for years about doing fives, right, like small groups of five.
Mr. Bennett does, but.
Well, but thirty thousand, yeah, thirty thousand is.
I think the intent was.
But hold on, before you, but that would be up to your scrutiny, where you would say, the benefit of preserving this is worth clustering and the resulting building makes sense. If you don't want it that way, then you don't allow, you just go back to your standard plan. You don't have to approve it that way. But you, taking all things into consideration, if there's some kind of resource and they have the yield, you're moving away from that resource. Maybe you create a breeze away or different, you know, you, we don't always know that it's going to be thirty thousand these days. You know, everything's getting bigger.
Yeah.
I think those separation.
But you would have to articulate it and it says that here.
I think it would be helpful for those separations to be written into the code. I think we're going to see more of this being driven by the applicant saying, hey, we found a resource, look, we saw some wetlands there, let us cluster and get our thirty thousand square foot building.
I mean, they're doing that now through the ZBA, but you're getting no environmental protection either. So at least in this case, you're, you're getting.
The ZBA has to be addressed.
Uh, but, but that's, you know, quasi judicial board, as you know. So the planning board, it says here, the planning board in ARB shall ensure that clustered commercial buildings are designed to be screened or otherwise articulated with facade breaks and appropriate materials to the, to ensure that massing is contextually appropriate. If you're in a commercial zone, you know, you have to look at that and say, well, this building looks, you know, feels right, doesn't look good, you know, whatever it is that you're going to set. Uh, we can add more standards, but we don't really, you know, like that's that same flexibility where you want to be able to have a give and take. Instead of us pre-mandate something where we don't know what, what the outcome's going to look like.
Janice, how'd you come up with thirty thousand square feet?
Two fifteens.
Two fifteens.
So is this a thirty thousand, a combination of two buildings? Max thirty thousand?
Well, well, that's the math, but it doesn't have to be. You know, that was the math there. The maximum, let's say in HB.
But that to me is the intention of this, more than one building.
Say I have a parcel that I can subdivide and I can get, and this is my building. Here's my building and here's my parcel is the paper.
Right.
I can get one. I can get one here and one here, and I'm gonna put a lot line down the middle and make it two parcels.
Right.
We're suggesting that you could also cluster those buildings, because there's, it's not just random, just like you asked in that last one, is there adjacent open space, is there a reason to cluster? They still have to meet all the standards here in two forty-seven, you can't just be like, I just wanna cluster it, cause I want a bigger building. You have to make findings as this board that this is appropriate, that there's something there to move away from. It just gives you a tool in your toolbox, it's not saying you have to use it.
Okay, but where, you know, we're here at the effect of applications that come in. They see thirty thousand square feet and they're gonna go for it. I mean, I have the same variant, what Dennis has, thirty, we've never had a third thirty thousand square feet building.
I do too. So then that would be your referral recommendation.
I think, I, I think the way to solve this is to state clearly in the code that A, the, the intent is not to diminish the goal of, of capping building sizes at thirty thousand, at fifteen thousand square feet. And to that extent, separation and separation, you know, design elements can be incorporated into the clustering at the, you know, in conjunction with the site plan. So in other words, they'll, they're gonna get two fifteen thousand square foot building and we can create the breezeways and the separation so we don't have the thirty foot, thirty thousand square foot.
We don't have one building.
Right, well, you could potentially, and that's up to you to really decide.
Well, if it's not written in the code.
We have to have it in, we have to have it in, in the code, I think.
Yeah.
Well, you do have to walk into it with eyes wide open, but you can articulate a building and you can make it look a certain way.
It would be productive for the, for the landowner though to know right from the get-go.
Right from the get-go.
That they're gonna have, they're not gonna get the thirty thousand square foot building.
They're not gonna get one building at thirty thousand.
They're gonna get the two fifteen thousand square, with separation, a breezeway, an alley.
But what, but how do you know that's appropriate? Like you're saying that, cause you're thinking of an ideal here and sometimes you could get a different style or something else
Then the town board has to, then they have to.
that may work better and you have the discretion to modify.
Then the town board has to go back to the code and lift that fifteen thousand square foot cap if they feel.
Yeah, that's.
Or they can go to the ZBA and try and vary it to thirty thousand.
You know, which we would strangely expect.
So your recommendation is do not allow, but that's like, so, but what if it doesn't work technically for, but that doesn't really the. They can go to the cluster code. You're saying like you don't want the flexibility in a cluster code right now by saying this.
Well, the flexibility is taking the two buildings and putting them on the same area of the lot. It's clustering the two that were allowed, so like the lot coverage is the tool, right, on the one.
That, that's.
For example, in, in residential clustering, okay, we can create manor houses, but we can't stack three dwelling units to exceed the thirty-two square foot height limitation. We can combine them.
Actually, you could.
You can.
Absolutely. You can modify anything for residential.
Right, but, but, but this, this can open up, this could be dangerous in terms of the size of buildings, knowing what's going on out here.
So what's the, so what, so you wanna say?
To restate, the, the intent is not to.
Diminish all of capping building sizes at fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand square foot.
Right, that, that needs to be maintained.
And, and.
And that, any single building of thirty thousand, we would, the square feet, I don't think we would support, right?
Why don't you just say, commercial buildings may be similarly clustered, period. Not and aggregated. We don't want them to put together, we just want them to be clustered.
And you're right, they will go to the ZBA and will, will generate a report, tell them to ZBA.
Yeah, and they'll get a variance.
Yeah, but why go get a variance? I mean, it's up to you guys and it's up to the town board. Like I hate to create a code where people then go get a variance, right?
Right, so let's, let's, let's look at some examples. Suppose I wanna build a campus and I want three buildings. I could do each of ten.
Right.
Nothing to exceed thirty thousand is the max, at least in my head from this, okay? Or I could do two buildings, one at twelve and one at eighteen, so that together, they do not exceed thirty thousand square feet.
But you're still assuming two buildings on one lot and we're saying two buildings can become one building.
Yeah, but that's, that's the danger, that's the danger, that's the problem.
Our feeling is thirty thousand square feet is way out of scale for our world.
Well, do you know that?
It could be divided.
You have supermarkets that are minimum forty.
I think the mass are.
You don't, you can't, I, I think it's a blanket statement without really knowing the all facts. But you have a lot of buildings in highway business, et cetera, that are more than fifteen thousand, right now, today.
No, yes, because, because they've, most of them are automotive, you know, the Mercedes building, et cetera.
Yeah.
But they come in, we need another five thousand square feet. We will often say, we really don't support it, cause it's fifteen thousand square foot limit in HB, go to the ZBA. The ZBA always gives it to them. So that we have fifteen thousand square feet, I think the largest automotive is now twenty-eight thousand square feet. So, but it's almost thirty, right? Um, I just don't think that, given the land mass that we have and the infrastructure that we have, could support any number of these, and I see that these could come in, you know, for whatever reason.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm viscerally scared with the thirty thousand square feet.
Viscerally.
I wanna write that down.
But that, we're viscerally scared.
Let's keep the emotions out of it. So you're saying that the intent is not to diminish the goal of capping building sizes of fifteen thousand and this board recommends.
Recommends.
That limitation be.
Limiting building sizes even though they may be clustered on similar lots, but doesn't make any sense.
Well, that's not, that's too vague, yeah. So that if buildings are clustered, they.
Separation.
It has to be more, that no one building can be thirty thousand square feet.
It's the aggregated language in that B that says clustered and aggregated.
Right.
I think we wanna take out and aggregated, right? Like we're just want them to be able to cluster their allowable development, not to make it into one.
Yeah.
Right.
They can cluster up to thirty thousand square feet however they wanna divide it. That's really what we're saying, right?
Yeah, but.
I know there's, there's a lot of semantics here at play.
Well, you're kinda saying something over here needs to be protected and so I'm pushing everything that I can have over here, over here.
Right.
But not in one building.
But not in one building is what you're saying.
Correct.
So, so even though I may be getting two buildings on one lot, they must be still each fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and there, there are a wide variety of ways you can create that separation, walkways, bridges, pedestrian bridges and.
Yeah, you could. You can slice it.
Maintain separation.
Yeah, I mean, look at the watermill center, you know, those little office buildings, there are like three buildings.
That was my site plan, I know.
Yeah, so that's, I'm thinking of that.
Yeah, it's just a little bit nicer.
But that's HOHC, so that's not, that's not HB.
Right, so eight, but eight way, right.
But ultimately, isn't it, it would be up to our discretion on an individual basis to examine the file and say, you know, this, this is too heavy for this lot.
We get pushed though, that's the problem, they go to the ZBA and they get it.
But you know.
They said thirty thousand.
Our suggestion is to try and get that language into the code.
So that they don't go.
It strengthens, cause we, we get, we get a lot of pushback from the private sector.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so any other comments? In theory, like it, don't like it?
In theory, what was the reason for?
Because there are ecological values, archaeological, ecological, et cetera, in commercials. Like the ecology of places don't know what commercial zoning even means, there's just, and you don't have that tool.
When you say commercial.
You can't say, move it over. If someone came in with a commercial subdivision, you don't have any ability to get a cluster plan, cause you're, you are enabled by the state, but our local court doesn't even say so.
Okay, so by commercial, do you mean, what do you mean by commercial?
Commercial zones, like highway business, shopping centers.
I think we spell, I should spell that out.
It does.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't read this.
Yeah, I don't know if you, I wouldn't, I didn't put HOHC because the idea there was even smaller.
Small, small.
Yeah.
So if you aggregated those, now you're totally missing the mark there, so I left those out.
No, we don't wanna do that. So it's really HB.
VB.
It doesn't even say VB, cause you're allowed to, basically VB has, you know, zero lot line anyway.
No, because VB is small.
Oh, yeah.
So it's really only HB.
HB and SCB, which isn't much.
I was just gonna say, what, what open space do we have?
What about the LI zones?
You'd be surprised. Uh, what?
The, the LI.
Yeah, uh, you, we did not say that, so you could recommend that to the board, like mine, not include light industrial.
Why, why was that included?
Only because, I mean, they need, you know, it's always just like massive equipment and things going on in the LI, so it's hard to cluster.
Lot of those LI zones sit next to, next to core Pine Barrens area, it may be.
Well, they're subject to just clearing anyway, unless they already put.
Yeah, but you could augment open, like sometimes there's a big tract of open space and you get these LI zones, I'm thinking on the Spian River, Riverhead Corridor, where, you know, where you do have some core tracts and open space could augment those, those core tracts.
Sure, so consider LI zones.
LI, LI zones as well, yeah.
I mean, would it hurt to put it in?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
Cause we don't have to accept them.
Yeah.
No, this is our referral.
This is just a referral on the code, it gets referred to you whether or not, what you think of it.
This is not a referral. Yeah.
Right.
So ultimately, we're okay with increasing the, or shifting the, the buildable.
Put it to us anyway.
The buildable lot size, right, onto one parcel.
As long as there was no one building of thirty thousand.
One, no one building exceeds fifteen thousand.
Right.
Has to be multiple buildings.
Yeah, campus style, connectors and.
Campus style. I mean, there's, I don't know that there's a lot of space left for that, you know, we don't have those big areas that other, uh, cat towns have. We don't have, I don't know that there's that much commercial space.
There's a lot of buildings that are like getting to the end of their useful life and people may come in and, and say, I wanna re-subdivide this or redo this or that, and then you don't have that tool, or you don't need it.
Re-do lot line, yeah.
You know, you can use it, as you know, you can say standard plan or cluster plan. That's wholly in your discussion.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a good tool, yeah.
So if you have it, it's better to have it and not need it, than to need it and not have it.
The state, the state gives it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Janice, did, at the public hearing on June thirteenth, did members of the public have comments that might interest us?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's some people who said, you know, were, had the same skepticism as you and then there were, you know, not too much other people. They're not really, uh, you know.
No. Nothing, nothing big mentioned. No attorneys had points of view on this or anything?
Not that I remember, yeah, correct.
So, so you hear our concerns?
I do, sure. I'll put it down. Intent is not to diminish the goal of capping building sizes of fifteen thousand, this board recommends that buildings still maintain, uh, si- that size with separation such as breezeways, campus, and consider the LI zones. Is that good?
Is that good?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, do you wanna vote on it now or you want me to type it up for another time? We have only thirty days on the agency responses, they closed the hearing the other day, so just so you know.
So are we comfortable with that?
Yeah.
We vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion to accept the referral by Dennis.
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor.
All right.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
Okay, then we have.
And then the referral for the, for Bess, for the moratorium.
Uh, moratorium.
You know, several weeks ago, Christine, did you ever find the, that document?
I didn't.
We submitted a document, we voted on it, it was a resolution to the town board asking for a moratorium, this was two months or something. We had it all spelled out, all written.
We can transcribe, it's in the, it's in the, it just has to be written down, it was verbal.
It's gotta be in minutes, minutes? So I wanted you to have that, because we probably wanna amend that, and the issue on the table is do we include canal battery or not in the moratorium, so.
But more so than that, I think that looking at the special exception standards of three thirty seventy, um, I'm sorry, uh, three thirty. One sixty-two point twenty-one, this is the actual code that was adopted.
This isn't the moratorium.
And you may have your opinions on should the moratorium be three months or six months or include or exclude or however, you know, you can tell me that.
Right.
But also, more importantly, do you have comments about the actual requirements for the special exception standards? So a lot of what we heard, I think we should address the elephant in the room the first thing, which has been a problem for years, and that is the legal interpretation that deeming something complete requires you to do SECR before you can have a public hearing. And that's been our problem for all this time, so I mean, that's really a problem.
Yeah, it's like putting the carpet for doors.
Before we, wait, Janice, before we get too far into this, I'm just trying to stand, we're doing a referral on the moratorium, not the, not the substance of what we're gonna do, but on the moratorium, but wait a minute.
No, but we haven't gone on the special exception.
No, but I.
But the moratorium, as I understand it, I'm not sure which, cause there was discussion at the last town board meeting, which one is moving forward and which one is not, so I don't know whether or not you need this referral right now on the one that you were here for.
She's got thirty days, you left her over.
Probably not, but if I can just get out what I have to say and you can think about it and marinate it and we can come back and have one.
But let me, let me just say that we already did this two months ago.
On the standards?
No, we never looked at the standards, this was on the moratorium, we requested that the town board.
We looked at the standards four years ago, but.
Issue a moratorium, yeah.
The purpose of the moratorium is to toll applications from being allowed to come in and be made under this, these provisions so that we can look at them.
Look at the code.
That is the code, I just think it out, and see what needs to be changed.
Right, well, we can't give you that now, I mean.
No, I'm not asking for it now, but I am asking for you to look at these standards and we can talk more, we can have a special thing, like we sort of tried to set up with our DEIS reviews and stuff like that, to go over these standards so that you can make meaningful comments on the actual review process, so that we're not caught out there again. Right, so we had NYSERDA give us a draft model code that we worked back and forth with NYSERDA on it. Then we got people make application, you know, against that code and, and then this whole thing has gotten to where we are today. So now the question then is, A, procedurally, we have some issues, which is not part of the moratorium referral, but generally, I wanna say that that, we all know, is a problem, because you're having to do SECR.
But it's not a problem, it's a situation we'll handle.
Before you deem something complete and have a public hearing. So that is just one of those procedural issues that keeps coming back.
But that's in general, yeah. But I don't wanna confuse, confuse, confuse that with this, it's my understanding that.
The other thing is. It's my understanding that you're gonna want them to do a moratorium.
Yeah, absolutely, whether it's three months or six months, I mean, we, we may have different opinions on that. I personally think it should be longer than shorter.
Yes.
And it should absolutely include the canal battery application, so that it's clean.
So do you wanna do just that this time around and do this another time?
That's, that's.
Because the more you have actual content, specific, that's fine, moratorium, six months a year.
But that's what Jay wants, he wants a referral from the planning board on the moratorium.
Sure.
And said that again.
And then, let's get to the actual heart of the matter, which is what's wrong with the code and what needs to change.
We can't tell you what's wrong with the total code.
We can't do that now.
Not now, but you.
Until we've either taken the study and talked to the experts and had the reports.
That's right.
And the seminars that we're going to have in the course of the moratorium, that's what we do.
That's the moratorium, that's the value of the moratorium.
Right, so what would you like to say about the moratorium itself, three or six or longer?
Well, I personally want six, because I think three months is a joke.
Six, I believe is what we recommend.
Yeah.
Three's completely inadequate.
I agree, six months, okay.
Six, six months, and that we wanna include in it to capture the canal property.
Well, we don't have to mention canal property, we can say.
Honestly, I don't know what we're doing right now, I, I'm asking you, is the one that's open still here for a referral?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is that going, do you need those comments, is that the one that's moving forward?
Yes. No?
They closed the hearing and asked for agency responses.
In thirty days.
And you're an agency that you can simply just say, yes, we recommend six month or longer moratorium and leave it at that. We look forward to having a consultation.
Well, Jay got all confused, he said something about that we have to have another public hearing for the canals.
Because there are other moratorium resolutions potentially that are being brought forward, which is why I'm asking if we still need the resolution on this one from this board, or are we gonna have to weigh in again on another resolution that ultimately is heard?
You know, you can always just later say, our, our last one stands, we still recommend you do it for whatever you're saying right now. It's not much different, in other words.
If we need to reread what we said to them.
It's up to you, whatever you wanna do, this was already on the agenda before the hearing the other day.[1674.31] It's up to you, whatever you wanna do, this was already on the agenda before the hearing the other day.
Right, but, but, but I think you're hearing from us what it is that we would like.
Okay.
Uh, counsel, I defer to you in terms of procedurally how we should, should do this.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily know that you need to do anything today. However, if you wanna just say generally that you support what you were saying, either six as opposed to three or whatever it is that ultimately gets whatever.
A six month moratorium.
And then you'll reserve the right to comment further when you are presented with one that is also going for public hearing. Should a second one be sent for your referral.
Right, that's good.
Okay.
Because he was very clear about that, I mean, he, Jay, he didn't really know what, how to proceed, except that the hearing that he had was just on the moratorium. Didn't have anything to do with, um, canal.
Well, that was excluded initially and then there's, and there was a lot of testimony about including it, but they felt that it wasn't noticed.
So he closed that hearing.
I think we said enough about it.
So that the applicant was aware that they were not excluded.
I see.
So it's, it's more fair to notice it so that they're aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, have the.
I, I think without naming specific projects, wouldn't it be better to just say all current pending applications?
Yeah.
And that way, no one party can say, ah, this whole thing is directed toward my client.
That's good. Counsel, is that good, all current impending applications?
It's, it's better.
Yeah, that way we're not naming specific applications.
Okay.
Separately, you know, six months is like a long time, but a short time in the scheme of everything, right, and meeting every couple of weeks.
Typically, Kate, they, they extend them.
Which is fine, yeah, but the point is outside of that, I wouldn't recommend extending it to a longer period of time for this.
Yeah.
But that, um, you know, would it, in the resolution, that there be some sort of like at least a, a skeleton plan for what we intend to do during that time?
It is in the moratorium resolution, you know, for fire safety, um.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry to get to read the.
Have you seen a copy of the moratorium resolution?
I read.
No, that's the actual code that I was hoping you would take home.
We'll take home and look at.
And the special standard, standards themselves so that we can refine those, um, but the, go ahead.
I, I, I read the three month, that was discussed the, the board meeting. I thought that, um, the tasks, if you will, I think that's somewhat Kate's referring to, should be outlined. I mean, it said because of concerns about fire safety, health and general welfare. But I think, and correct me here if I'm wrong, but when we discussed and recommended a six month moratorium, we identified, I think, um, the need to possibly be proactive in helping, uh, define and locate sites rather than taking them as they come in.
I don't think that we spelled that out when we sent a letter to the town board, which nobody can find, by the way, which is so strange.
You didn't, you didn't.
We did.
We didn't, it was just a very.
It was part of the discussion we had with Janice and I had with the board when we went and spoke to them verbally.
Okay, and, and I also think, um, finding qualified consultants to assist us in evaluating these applications. I mean, what are we gonna do in the six months we have in the moratorium?
Well, that's what I was saying, it's like I've been researching.
But that's, that is not, this is not what we're addressing here. This is some, that, that's a detail thing that we could submit that document in our request at a later date because we're gonna be talking with Christine shortly, so.
But I think we're.
Okay. Okay.
So what.
That's to come.
What we're referring, what we're, our referral is to consider the language of the town board's resolution to adopt a moratorium, right?
Correct.
And so I do, I think we're on the same page, Tom, at least that, that resolution should include language, uh, more, slightly more specifically about, um, what will occur during that time. And if it does, then I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to do that specific language.
No, it doesn't, that's, that's fine, that's a good comment.
But that, you know, we're going to do X, Y and Z, um, during this time.
But we can't do that now, though.
Okay.
There's no way we can do that now because we have to go over.
Just, just, just in my experience, I've been enough through a number of these moratoriums, this language and probably case law would, once you, the language really regarding moratoriums, the legal language i- is the, is that it's brief. And if you start going out further than six months, there's a, there's a whole issue of takings, land use. So typically, six months is kind of like a template moratorium, what hap- the reality is, there's a study underway, there are consultants, um, various legislations being drafted, we're reaching the end of moratorium, the legislative body extends it another three months, in some cases, another six months, I've seen that. So it's good to keep, keep it short, keep it defined, six months as well within the window of what this town has done on prior moratoriums.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't think anyone is suggesting that we recommend longer than six months, just that we define what the, what will occur during that.
And it is to review the code.
Yeah. But the reality is it'll probably, we'll be right in the middle of it when the sixth one, we're coming to the six month window and they'll extend it.
But we don't. Right. But we don't wanna include what it is that we wanna do in those six months or what we want the town board to do because we have not discussed it.
Right. Right.
Right.
So we, and we will, and if you want that at a later date, you know.
Okay.
You need an RFP, you need a consultant, you need, uh, an outline.
But just generally, what we're saying is that we support six month moratorium on all current and pending applications.
And pending applications.
Okay.
And that would be period.
Pending in future.
I've covered everything.
Yeah.
And reserve the right to comment on future legislation.
Yes.
Obviously.
Sure.
As, as men did.
They'll always refer it every time.
Right, right.
Um.
And Janice, refining the standards would go by way of work sessions with you?
I think that's probably appropriate, yeah.
That's a good thing to do, yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of ideas already, you know, talking to, uh, public safety, I can share those with you, what they've said so far. And, um, talking to P S E G, um.
All right, so we'll set up a session, Janice.
Good.
We have some information to share as well.
Let's vote on this, um.
All the parties in, yeah.
These are underlying, but they're adopted, so this is.
This is all adopted, what you're concerned about is the, is the special exception one, the over six hundred kilowatt hours.
That was adopted in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Also, uh, you know.
Aren't they looking at the whole code?
No, it's one sixty-two point twenty-one, it's the special.
Is all, is.
The, the rest of it is just like in your, you know, in your house batteries, that, that has nothing to do with this. Like it's, the special exception is the only code relevant. You're not doing a moratorium on, um, just if someone's putting a battery in there.
No, 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 no.
But it's, but that one's done on megawatt hours, is it not, kilowatt hours?
Six hundred kilowatt hours.
Six times.
Which is what in megawatts in terms of the system?
It's a times a thousand, I mean, what are we talking about when we say those numbers though, right?
Right.
Electrons, they're, it's like saying like there's a million IU of in my probiotic of something.
That's why.
Like, where, when you say like, oh my god, it's ten thousand, whatever, remember that we're talking about electrons.
But I think, I, I, I need to better understand what those K Ws and all mean.
Right. Sure, well, kilo, a thousand, mega, thousand times that, that seems like a lot.
What would that translate to in a, in a megawatt? What would, what would be the equivalency of a megawatt, it's, it's a one thousand, it's one megawatt per what?
It's another. Kilomega, you know, so it's, every time it times it by a hundred, so it's a hundred times.
Watt hours. But what do megawatts transfer to kilowatt hours?
But when we say that, we're, we're.
Can I take a vote on this, please, this referral?
Back to us, it's me.
When you say those numbers, I just wanna be clear that you're talking about electrons and, and being stored in a battery. Those megawatt numbers are electrons, they're like atoms.
Yes, but, but what, what does that mean in terms of size, like what does it do?
Yeah, I think that's where all that training stuff should really be helpful to talk about, what are we talking about when we talk about?
Yes.
The whole point of a moratorium to look into, to have the time to look into, to study, to be, make a blueprint, to make an intelligent piece of legis- legislation, that's what it's for.
Storage.
Yeah, gives us a breathing.
So, um, I'm gonna call for, um, the language, a motion, yeah, a motion by Dennis.
Well, we need a motion.
Yeah, I support, yeah, I support this.
Put a motion, I'll, I'll move it.
Second by Gloria, all in favor, opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I will get that back up, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Janice.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, how, how much more is on the agenda? Two things, okay, let's go because we have another session.
Yes, and, and pretty straightforward, uh, so we'll go ahead and take care of that one for you, uh, Wayne.
So number, well, number sixteen, no, number six on the agenda, which is not off the agenda, Anthony had, uh.
You took it off?
Stated it.
I thought we were bringing it back on.
So number six, uh, Morville Francis Lee Junior, uh, so about the application report.
Oh, yeah.
This is for, this is, uh, uh, the project location is seven Percy Avenue, West Hampton. Uh, this is to consider a two lot subdivision on a fifty-seven thousand square foot parcel, uh, currently in our forty zoning district. Uh, they are splitting the parcels, um, exactly in half. Uh, each lot will be comprised of twenty-four thousand square feet, I'll bring up the map for you again.
This is yours, Wayne?
Yes, my partner. We, uh, Robert, my partner.
Mo, Robert.
So I'll both report quickly for your review. Okay, uh, the lot is only located in New York State Archaeological Sensitives area as far as, uh, Oakley District. Um, the subject property, uh, is located, uh, in a, uh, the surrounding, surrounding area for the subject property is comprised of residentially developed parcels. Uh, it is just west of Beaver Down Creek, uh, as I mentioned already, um, the numbers are awful here. Lots one and two will be exactly twenty-four thousand square, square feet, not twenty, excuse me then. The project area is fifty-four thousand square feet, the lots will be twenty-seven thousand square feet exactly, so I gotta make that adjustment.
Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I haven't seen the report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't pass them out.
It's not, it was not in the packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the lot size again, fifty-four thousand square feet, one point two acres. Uh, proposed lot one, twenty-seven thousand square feet, proposed lot two will be also twenty-seven thousand square feet. Uh, it is located in our forty zoning district, uh, so both lots will be, uh, substandard. But the applicant did receive, as of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, zoning board approval, uh, four lot area, uh, to accommodate the subdivision application for these two lots. Uh, the proposed lots, uh, subdivision application is a type two action, uh, no further environmental review is necessary. Uh, we did hold public hearing on, uh, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, uh, with no public comments. Uh, and we closed with a ten day written comment period, uh, which we did not receive any comments from the public. Uh, conformance with zoning, if you just refer to that section, um, in the past, uh, with particularly within the West Hampton, uh, West Hampton area, uh, two lot subdivisions, um, do not necessarily need to go to the zoning board, uh, for a substandard lot. Uh, the planning board does have the ability, uh, provided that the applicant transfers development rights or, uh, pine bearings credits. And if the property is at least one and a half times the minimum lot size for, uh, the zoning district, which in this case would be our forty, and sixty thousand be required. However, they, they did not meet that requirement, uh, and obviously obtained Z V A refu- uh, approval. Uh, and as far as the referral, they did mention, uh, the need for, uh, transfer development rights, uh, or right, uh, or pine brand credits as applicable. Um, we did refer the, uh, application out to, uh, fire prevention, uh, trails advisory, West Hampton Beach Fire District and engineering. The one, uh, mentioned from fire prevention, uh, and, uh, Wayne wanted to talk about this as well, uh, which is part of my recommendations. As the area, uh, is served by a public service, uh, water mains and fire hydrants. But the nearest fire hydrant, uh, is on the opposite side of Montauk Highway, they are recommending the installation of a fire hydrant on Percy Avenue, uh, to prevent the closure of Montauk Highway due to an emergency. So I included that, uh, uh, but the applicants would like to, uh, see if that could be removed as far as the recommendations are concerned.
There's Percy Avenue on the other side of the highway?
So, uh, Percy Avenue is, and I'll pull this up for you.
Because we had an application once, remember, they had to, they wanted them to run the water line under the highway.
Yeah, that was on the north. Under the North Highway, remember that.
So.
Point, pointy at the candy.
Can you see the, uh, aerial?
The candy, pass the candy down.
It's Montauk Highway.
There goes Montauk Highway, this is Percy Avenue, not to be confused with Percy Street, right next to it.
I'm sorry, point it out again?
Yes, this is Montauk right here.
Yeah.
This is Percy Avenue and this is Percy Street.
Yeah. And the Suffolk County Water Department wants them to.
So the fire prevention, actually, Division of Fire Prevention is recommending, uh, installation of a fire hydrant on Percy Avenue. Cause there is, uh, right now, the only, uh, fire hydrant is on Montauk Highway. And if they close Montauk Highway and if for an emergency, they like to have, at the very least, a fire hydrant on Percy Avenue.
But.
So if you refer to my recommendation, I included that.
Why is this burden supposed to be placed on this applicant? What about, I'm looking at all these houses here, it's certainly a worthwhile goal, but what, what about this subdivision that it's triggering all of a sudden?
Can we let Wayne speak to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Wayne.
Sure, so you didn't get to the.
Just give us your.
Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marc Cinzing Bruin, on behalf of the applicant. Um, if you go two advisory reports down, you have the West Hampton Beach Fire District giving you their advice. And they have no objection as submitted. Um, the interesting thing here is if there's an emergency, they're shutting down Montauk Highway or whatever it is, so it all depends. But they want another fire hydrant and, and the thing that everyone needs to know is the Suffolk County Water Authority is only gonna put in fire hydrants with a certain spacing. It's usually a thousand feet apart, so if you, you're no further than five hundred feet from a hydrant. And that's the NFPA code and everything else that everybody follows. In this instance, the property, you know, the, the fire hydrant is right on the south side of the intersection across the street, uh, Percy and Montauk Highway, as they indicate. The distance to this property from Montauk Highway is, what, two hundred sixty-eight feet? Um, and then the entire length, three hundred and sixty feet of this property, so.
So that's less than the five hundred?
You're talking about to, to put in a, a water main extension way beyond north of this to get a fire hydrant to be, meet the spacing requirements that the water authority will actually put in. So this is well beyond the scope of what the subdivision and, it's wishful thinking, thinking, but I don't think that this applicant should be burdened with that. They are extending public water to serve this property.
Your client is?
Yes, but it's only to, to the nature of the, the first lot, you know, the lot, you know, where the, actually to the house.
To the lot. So that's like two hundred and fifty feet?
Well, no, no, it's, it's like five hundred feet.
Oh, okay.
But to do a fire hydrant, they're not gonna put a fire hydrant five hundred feet from the other fire hydrant.
No.
So there, it would be, need to go another five hundred feet or so before they put another hydrant. And you can see on the aerial, what, you know, if Jeff goes a little higher, you can see that, that subdivision is kinda weird, weird goes and so on and so forth up there. It's an old file, that.
Correct.
Well, I think it's, I, I think it's.
And they're existing dwellings, so I don't think you would ever get anybody coming in and asking another subdivision to extend public water.
Well, that's a comment, I mean, it's not our comment.
Right, it's a comment, not necessarily has to be a recommendation, I can remove that, it's totally fine.
So we, we would like you to strike that recommendation, and especially in light of the, West Hampton Beach Fire District, who serves this area, they had no objections to the proposal.
Yeah. So we'll strike three, right, compliance with.
Yep. Uh, as far as recommendations concerned, uh, we're recommending that they move forward to a final application for a two lot standard plan. Uh, also compliance with the Z V A approval, uh, and, uh, regu- and transfer of development rights, uh, and or pine bearings credits in accordance with town code. Uh, and obviously, compliance with town engineer comments, the, uh, sole comment, um, uh, the main comment was a three inch drainage for all future, uh, impervious surfaces. Uh, final Suffolk County Health Department approval as well, uh, uh, to be submitted with the final application, uh, in all requisite, uh, paperwork, uh, final application. Pretty straightforward, two lot subdivision, and they've already gotten Z V A approval, so.
Well, Z V A, what is item number two or, or?
We're taking out number three.
Number three, uh, with acceptance of number three.
Buying the division of fire.
Yeah, my client is doing pine bearing credit.
Bringing pine out.
Anything else, Wayne?
Under the park requirement, and it indicates the park requirement, there's one additional lot, but I would just note in your code that it's a flat fee. I believe it's the twenty-five hundred, so I would want, just.
Correct. I'll specify that, yeah.
I want it specified.
Sure, that's all.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments?
Motion without the report.
Motion to adopt the report as amended by Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Second. Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Next, Wayne.
And last one, which is the number, and just for the record.
The last one. Eighteen?
Let's see. Item number eighteen is off the agenda.
Oh, that's on point.
Eighteen is off.
Is off?
Yeah, eighteen is off, and we're actually, the last one is number fifteen, site disturbance.
Rolling Hills?
Rolling Hills. Uh, the subject property is located at fifty-four Valley Road, uh, at Sac Harbor or Noiac, uh, to be specific. Uh, the applicant is allotted sixty percent allowable clearing, uh, they have cleared up, upwards of eighty-seven percent and are required to restore twenty, twenty-seven percent of natural vegetation. Uh, this arrow doesn't necessarily depict the current, uh, state of the property, um, property itself, uh, the wooded area to the rear is mostly, uh, disturbed, uh, which is where they are also proposing to revegetate.
So they've cleared since that picture or the picture just goes?
Yes, they've cleared since that picture in conjunction with a, uh, building permit to install, I believe, a garage on the property, uh, along with fencing. Uh, and that's how this was actually, uh, discovered. The planted plan is consistent with the requirements that, um, that we usually, uh, uh, require for, uh, restoration purposes. Uh, eco, uh, the ecology here is pine, uh, oak pine, uh, forest, uh, which is consistent with the plants, um, proposed on this planted plan as well. As you can see here, most of the plantings, uh, will, will be outside of the, the main, uh, property area to the rear of the residence. So I'm move, I'm proposing that we, uh, approve this plan as it is, uh, this way they can go ahead and implement the planting plan. If there's any questions, concerns?
Well, it's good.
Are you good with it?
Yes, yeah, I am.
Okay, any questions? Motion to adopt?
Yeah.
Motion by, uh, Tom, second by, uh, Dennis, all in favor, opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Second.
Second. Aye.
Okay.
You're done?
Done.
Um, okay, that, we're going into a closed session to have a discussion with counsel.
Okay.
And we'll adjourn this meeting and, uh, come back for the public hearing at six o'clock.[1785.64] So I need a vote for that.
Motion to adjourn.